We convene the August 3rd Parker Town Council meeting at 7:03 PM. All council members are present. Councilwoman Renee Williams is joining us remotely through Zoom from Arizona and all other council members are here. If everyone would please join me in honoring our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I miss having scouts here doing that. Man, it's always fun. All right. All right, just as a reminder for everyone watching at home, general public comment is handled now during this time by submitting those comments through the town's website by 5:00 PM the day of a meeting. And those general public comment items are then sent to all of council for review on specific items that are public hearings. When those items come up, there will be an opportunity for public comment there. And that's done through Zoom, not through Facebook. So if you're watching through Facebook Live, there should be information on there for you about how to access the Zoom meeting if you have a public comment. Public comments placed on the Facebook Live feed are not shown here and will not be put in for public comment. So if you're there on Facebook and you want to give a public comment on an item that's on our agenda, head over to the Zoom meeting. So with that, first up, we've got Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. Do we have a representative from the chamber on?
We do. Hello. This is Cara Masa with the Parker Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, for having me this evening. Good to kind of see you. Our main focus right now with the Chamber of Commerce is our membership. We had a great campaign called Celebrate Membership where we visited over 100 of our members going out to their businesses and we did 30 to maybe one-minute commercials for them and put them out there on social media and did some marketing for those people who were interested. It was exciting. It was great to see people, to see their businesses, what they were doing, just a really positive atmosphere. And in doing that, we've actually grown some membership, getting some new businesses that are actually open up in the Parker area. This is really exciting, I think, during this time. So our focus over the next couple of months is going to continue to be our membership, the support of that membership with advertising. We're doing a few in-person events, some women's forums and such like that. So again, just real focused on that, that businesses, their retention, and what we can do to help them during these times. And that's what's going on with the Parker Chamber right now.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Council. Do you have any questions for Cara? No, I don't see any. All right, Cara, thank you very much. Go wash your hands.
Okay. Thank you.
See ya. All right, so next up is Downtown Business Alliance updates. Do we have a representative from the Downtown Business Alliance? Going once? I don't think, no?
If you're here from DBA, please raise your hand in Zoom.
All right.
Dined, I think there was a chat addressed to that. I just saw it pop up.
And Barrington?
Yeah.
I saw her name come up.
See if there's... Oh, there's a...
Hi. That's Ann Barrington.
Hi, Ann. Go right ahead.
Hey, sorry about that.
No problem.
Hey, I'm really excited to be here. Thank you, Council, for allowing the Downtown Business Alliance to give you a report. I am happy to report we're seeing a lot of activity downtown since business reopened. And so again, I am Ann Barrington. I'm the vice chair of the Downtown Business Alliance. So we have really seen our business community come together in a special way. And let me tell you about some of the key activities that we've been having, that we've had go on with the Downtown Business Alliance. We recently had, over the Fourth of July weekend, we held our Hometown Holiday Campaign. And the DBA's marketing committee implemented a campaign to help drive foot traffic to downtown Parker business, DBA members, and to really help to build some community awareness around retail, restaurant, and services in downtown Parker. And just let you know, we're still here. We never went away. And we are also trying to keep Parker a cleaner place. On July 18th, we had DBA volunteers out picking up trash along Pike's Peak as part of our Adopt a Street initiative. And then also right now, we have our marketing committee surveying our members to get more granular marketing ideas while at the same time we're launching a general downtown Parker promotion on social media. So it's kind of stay tuned for that. We are looking to deploy some funds towards specific projects, more specifically, a more specific project. There are several items that we're considering and we're really hoping to have some more information for you over the next couple of months. Our kind of pet project has unfortunately, we've had to not only put it on the back burner, we've just really had to rule it out. And that was, we were trying to install Bluetooth speakers throughout the entire downtown Parker area or downtown Parker Main Street. But it's just, what we're finding so far, it's just really too cost prohibitive. So we're trying to move on to something else that's going to really help our members, especially during these times. So lastly, we continue to meet with P3. I'm really excited about the project slated to be part of the upcoming bond initiative. But while we understand this item is not going to be part of P3, again, we are very hopeful the town will extend the festoon lighting down Main Street and Pike's Peak. We do feel that this project represents, really, it's an unparalleled bang for our buck to enhance downtown Parker. And as a Realtor, I know firsthand that curb appeal is what can really help sell a property. So we're still pushing for those festoon lighting downtown or down Main Street Parker. So thank you for your time this evening, and we really look forward to presenting to you next month.
Excellent, Ann. Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions for Ann? I don't see any. All right, Ann, thank you very much. Have a good evening and go wash your hands.
Thanks.
All right. So next up, like I said earlier, public, general public comments have been submitted to the town through the town's website, closed at 5:00 PM. And then we're going to move on to the next item, which is reports, items, comments for Mayor and Council. Renee, since you're remote, I'll go ahead and start with you.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we sure can.
Wonderful. So pretty much same thing, not much has changed. We had our liaison meeting, Debbie Lewis and I, for P3. And then working with the High Needs Work Group with Douglas County through any COVID items that come up. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Renee. Josh?
Nothing this week, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Cheryl?
Yeah, we had a meeting with the Douglas County Housing Authority. And they were in the process of refinancing and creating financing for a couple of new projects. I was not able to stay to the entire end of the meeting. But the other thing, I realized, town legal staff submitted suggestions over their new IGA with no major issues. And so I think that's still pending. I'd have not heard if that was all finalized by that entity.
Okay. Jeff?
Last week, I had my liaison meeting with the Parker Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to underscore what Cara pointed out was that they went and took the opportunity to visit 100 of their members and not only visit them, find out how they're doing in terms of retention, staying afloat, but they also had the opportunity to film videos. And if you haven't looked at their, there's some really, really creative ones. The lady who's showing you how to work out of your home because her gym was impacted, there's some really creative ones. So I really, really applaud them for focusing on business and promoting business. And then lastly, on Thursday, Councilmember Dyak and I had our PD liaison meeting with our new Deputy Chief Combs. And it was, I'd say, very informative. But I think the message that I wanted to take away is the overwhelming sense of support that the Police Department has from the community, from the council. It was, the chief said it's palpable and it's very much helping them get through this time that they're going through. So that's it for me.
All right. Debbie?
I don't hear anything.
Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended a weekly tri-county COVID call. Some of the takeaways with the mask usage, Douglas County is 96%. The executive director has continuously praised Douglas County just for doing the right things and also having low numbers. So there actually is another dashboard, if you will. It's the variance metrics, which is, I get a lot of questions on, what are they looking at? So if you Google "tri-county data resources," it'll bring you to three options and you can do variance metrics. And that has, I think, three of them. The only other one I believe that is important would be hospitalizations. And that is, to me, I think we're in pretty great shape. If you go back to the other dashboard, I think we're about 35, 36% vacant on that. Cultural and Scientific Commission, we had our first meeting post the retirement of Elaine Mariner. And Carrie and Denise did a fantastic job. It was great to see the commissioners back talking culture and science. We also had an investment advisory meeting. This is sort of an offshoot of the Finance Liaison. We have two Parker residents who are highly credentialed in the investment area talking to our financial advisor to ensure that our policy is in compliance and to talk about rates of return and other technical things. And lastly, I took part in the E470 retreat. It was part one. What we do is we talk about the upcoming year's work plan. We tie it back to the strategic plan. And we talked about general and financial themes. So for those strategic people like me, it was fun. And I have two more hours here next week to look forward to. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you very much. All right, next up on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion on Consent Agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for further discussion. So in front of you, Council, you have Consent Agenda items 6A through 6L.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I don't see an L.
Mine's got an L on it. J K...
Got an I.
Well, H I...
I.
J K L.
Yeah, I see that.
I mean, L is wrong. L comes after K on this, so...
The one should be an L.
Yeah, that's why I said through L.
Thank you.
I extrapolated that the letter that comes after K is L, even though it says one.
I move to approve Consent Agenda items A through L, please.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh and we have a second from Debbie. Council, in just a sec, your voting box will pop up. Or hopefully it will.
Glad you know that L comes after K.
Who are we waiting on?
One.
There we go. All right, motion passes unanimously.
I just want to clarify, is that really L? Because it's part of contracts.
It's not an L. No, it's an I. It's one.
It's supposed to be an L, but they accidentally did it.
But it's not, though, because it's part of contracts. It's a contract to succeed.
Okay.
So do I need to amend?
It's a one dot.
Because it's items A through K.
Oh, I thought it was a misprint from a one to an L. All right.
One.
So do we need to re-amend that motion to, through K?
Maybe just a motion to clarify.
Okay. Can I get a motion to clarify that one is part of contracts over 100,000 K?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Debbie. All in favor?
All right.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, next up on our agenda, public hearings. This is item number seven. 7A is Old Town at Parker Rezone Sketch and Preliminary Plans is Continued from July 20th, 2020. There's two sections to this. Section A1 is ordinance number 3.162.3. On second reading, this is a bill from ordinance to amend the Old Town at Parker Plan Development Guide and Plan to amend the zoning ordinance and map to conform therewith. And A2 is filing two sketch and preliminary plans. I understand we're going to have one presentation, but Council, I just want you to understand that there's multiple parts to that for when it comes up. And let's see, Carolyn, are you going to be our presenter?
I will be presenting tonight, Brianna.
All right, come on down. Virtually.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. This evening, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the Oldie Town at Parker Plan Development and for a sketch and preliminary plan. The applicant is Norris Design and the representative is Bill Maher. The applicant is present to answer any question the council members might have and will also have a presentation of their own following staff's report. The applicant has demonstrated that all public notes requirements have been met. The site is located on the south side of Main Street between Jordan Road and Matzenbacher Road. The PD amendment will add a 12.2-acre lot to the Oldie Town at Parker subdivision for condominium and single-family attached housing to be known as Cinderos Creek North. The sketch and preliminary plans propose 48 residential townhome sites and a five-acre site on which to construct three for-sale multifamily condo buildings. Additionally, the applicant will reconfigure two adjacent commercial lots and the existing drainage facilities. Slide, please. The Oldie Town at Parker property was annexed in 2000 with a PD zoning that provided for 5.5 acres of commercial area, 595 residential units, and a series of parks. In 2003, the PD was amended and a sketch and preliminary plan was approved that enlarged the commercial area to 13.35 acres. And the commercial area is shown here inside the red squares. The commercial area includes the Axis Drive and adjacent drainage swale on the east side of the boundary of the planning area shown here in blue. And construction of the western half of the PD ceased in 2008 with economic downturn, but has since been largely developed. In 2017, the eastern half of the original development was purchased by the developer proposing this current amendment. The request tonight includes a 12.2 unplatted parcel located north of the original development. This property was annexed into the town in 2014 and is shown here outlined in yellow. Slide, please. The PD amendment will include the addition of the 12.2-acre site that is currently vacant and zoned agricultural. This area is proposed to be zoned multifamily, which is a use currently allowed in the PD and existing within the development today. The two commercial lots and the adjacent drainage areas are currently located in Planning Area 1 and are designated as a commercial center. This area will remain largely unchanged in terms of uses. Slide, please. The sketch and preliminary plans propose 48 townhome lots and one 5.236-acre lot that will be developed into three for-sale condominium buildings containing 108 dwelling units for a total of 156 new residential units. Additionally, the plat will reconfigure two commercially zoned lots and reclaim 1.86 acres of the adjacent drainage tract through reengineering. These two commercial lots and the drainage tracts will be removed from filing one and replatted into filing two. Slide, please. Surrounding uses include existing commercial to the west, American Academy Elementary School to the east, and existing residential development to the north and south. Higher-density residential is appropriate at this location as a transition between less intense residential and non-residential areas. The proposed development is designed to have less dense development closer to the existing family lots and increase in density as you move closer to the commercial areas. The mixed-use project combines a variety of housing types with a design that expands pedestrian connectivity and encourages residents to walk or bike to tame goods and services. Next slide, please. The property is located near the intersection of Jordan Road and Main Street, which provides good transportation connections to major transportation corridors such as I-25 and Parker Road. There are two access points into the development, one from the north via Main Street and the second from the south via East Springfield Court. The extension of East Springfield Court will provide vehicle and pedestrian access from the residential areas to the adjacent commercial facilities. Springfield Court from the north will end in a cul-de-sac, avoiding through traffic from Clark Farms subdivision. Slide, please. This proposal is consistent with the Parker 2035 Master Plan, which identifies this area as medium-density residential and within a neighborhood center. The neighborhood center designation allows for higher density when applied in a mixed-use walkable development. This design provides a transition from single-family residential to commercial uses while integrating the commercial uses with adjacent residential and recreational uses through pedestrian-oriented alternative access routes that encourages residents to walk or bike. This design supports the full-service community that is envisioned in the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Next slide, please. The uses, density, and overall design considerations recommended for the medium-density residential and neighborhood center districts are consistent with the proposed PD amendment and with the nine approval criteria for the rezoning request. The applicant has also demonstrated compliance with the requirements of the land development ordinance and all other regulatory documents for the sketch and preliminary plans. Slide, please. Therefore, staff and planning commission are recommending Town Council approve the Oldie Town at Parker Third Amendment to the Development Guide and Plan. Additionally, staff and planning commission are recommending Town Council approve the Oldie Town at Parker filing two sketch and preliminary plans with the two conditions as recommended in staff's reports. This concludes staff's report. Staff would like to ask the council permission to reserve questions until after the applicant has completed their presentation.
All right, Brianna, thank you very much. We'll do that. Council will reserve their questions until after Bill has finished his presentation.
He is. He may need to be promoted, though.
Nope, there he is. Oh, did we lose him? Did Jim Cleveland kick him out? Because I saw Jim's name come up right where Bill's was.
Bill, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Bill Maher and Project Representative with Norris Design. And we have the slides up? Wonderful, thank you so much. First of all, before I begin, I would like to thank the staff, in particular Carolyn Parkinson, for their very thorough review and comments throughout this process. We've been working with them for the past two years on this, and we're excited to be here tonight and bring this towards you for your consideration. Next slide. I'm joined by the applicant and property owner Brian Beiler of Pacific North. And these team members listed on this slide here. Next slide, please. The two-plus years that we've been working on this particular application that Brianna went over just previously, we worked hard to ensure that it aligns with the town goals, working hand-in-hand with staff to make sure they are comfortable with that. And I want to stress that this is an owner-occupied project that we are moving forward with condominiums. And the final outcome of this will be to do a condominium plat at the very last part of the process. And it has a series of townhomes that are intended to be owner-occupied as well. And with this application, we've been working with Clark Farms and as well as the Newtown HOA to improve the drainage improvements for both neighborhoods with this application and also improve the neighborhood circulation with the extension of to Main Street from Springfield Court. Next slide, please. And a big part of this project has been the intentional transition of land uses. And a big part of this project has been the intentional transition of land uses. We've been working on this development since about 2016, the larger neighborhood. And then you see the areas with the lots in yellow just north of Todd Drive and west of Matzenbacher that was previously approved and is now under construction. And as we move forward through this development, we've been looking at the PD that has been established since 2003 and followed suit with the recommendations established in that for townhomes. And then as we get closer to the commercial and Main Street, transition into the multifamily. And as you see on this slide, there is existing multifamily designation that is over in Jordan Road in the brown color. Next slide please. And these are just pictures of the sites that were taken last summer. Next slide please. And I want to speak to the neighborhood involvement and outreach we have done really since 2016 with this larger neighborhood. Our first meeting was in 2016 and since then we've had three additional formal neighborhood meetings, most recently last August. And during that time, we've also been meeting with the HOA at various times to work with them on the development of the pool. And we worked hand-in-hand in that and also did many site visits to go through the existing trees within the neighborhood to replace them and also work with them to identify sidewalk connections. Next slide please.
Okay, just one moment, please.
I'm sorry?
Just one moment, she's having some technical difficulties.
Okay, take your time.
We need a technical difficulties, you know, bug to go across the screen on that.
Be a slide seven, the next one.
There we go.
There you go, thank you. And this shows you the overall timeline of development with the subdivisions to the south that were approved in 2018. The approval of the community pool has been long-promised in 2018 and we're pleased now that all these developments are under construction and we have a few photos to share on them. Next slide please. And this slide shows you overall some of the specific improvements that we've been working with the town and the HOA and Metro District on to improve the overall neighborhood, such as neighborhood signage, extension of bike paths and sidewalks, landscaping along Matzenbacher Drive, to really bring this neighborhood up to a current condition that is exceedingly pleasing and in the intention that it was always promised to be built out as. Next slide please. And this slide shows you how we are planning to complete the overall pedestrian and bicycle connections throughout the entire neighborhood with the subdivisions that are under construction and the site that is before you tonight. And this is really a hallmark of Parker neighborhoods. So many neighborhoods in your community are well-connected and have sidewalks and bike paths that serve a wide variety of the population and we wanted to show this development as well. Next slide please. And along with this overall neighborhood project, in 2018, as I mentioned, we undertook the development of the pool that was promised to be built in 2008 and it was approved in 2018 and it is currently under construction and we are very pleased how it is coming along. And we've worked hand-in-hand with the HOA and Metro District on this. Next slide. And we're excited to bring this photo to you tonight. This was just taken last Thursday and a long time coming, but the pool is now filled. So we're getting very close. Carolyn will be pleased. Next slide please. And this, just as, these images are just an indication of some of the overall site amenities and landscaping that we're currently installing throughout the neighborhood to improve the overall quality. Next slide please. And as Brianna touched on, this application also involves a sketch and preliminary plat to develop the lots and blocks for development and the roads as well. Next slide please. And in closing, as Brianna mentioned in her staff presentation, we feel this project complies with many of the town's policies and provides a walkable neighborhood. One thing of note, as we are moving forward with the development, over 55% of the site that is before you tonight is being landscaped into parks and open spaces, which exceeds the town criteria by 10%. Next slide please. And just to expand on that, this slide indicates the vision and guiding principles established in your master plan. And things we're very excited about is we're adding additional housing options to diversify homeownership and meeting the needs of a wide range of the population. Next slide please. And I just want to touch on, in closing, how we are meeting the past commitments that were promised to the neighborhood and furthering the neighbor along by finally seeing the pool realized and will be open to the entire neighborhood, expanding the pedestrian connections, expanding housing options, and improving this neighborhood that was one time considered a blighted area with partially undeveloped areas and providing a full-service community with introduction of additional offices and sidewalks and roads that will connect to the commercial developments. Next slide. Thank you so much for your time and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Bill. So for questions, we're just going to go for the sake of the fact that we're all sitting here and this is all on virtual, I'm just going to call on each council member in the council if you have any questions specifically to Bill or to Brianna, this would be the time to ask them and then after this, we will go to public comments. So Renee, since you're the one virtual, I'll start with you if you have any questions at this time.
Questions at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Josh?
Just first question, could you go back to the sketch and preliminary plat? My question is concerning the cul-de-sac, the dead-end cul-de-sac on the north side.
Oop, there we go. Okay.
So that cul-de-sac on the north side, how does it come into play if we're not allowing access to that or are we allowing access to that?
Hasn't, what do you mean, to expand on your question?
Sure, I understood during the presentation that we had two points of access, one to the south to the existing circulator road and one to the west to the commercial district. Yet we show a build-out of a dead-end cul-de-sac, I believe, coming out of Clark Farms on the north side of this project.
Yep, so that cul-de-sac, that street currently ends there today. So the intent of this is to build out that cul-de-sac and not have that development cut through to access this side street, so to say. It's really part of the feedback that we heard from the neighborhoods and all that, just to try to guide the traffic through this area.
Okay.
Bill, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I guess my question is, I just was hoping that maybe Bill and his team could explain the benefit of grading and paving a road that serves no homes. Maybe it's fire access, maybe there's more to this that I'm not seeing, but I see a parking place, I see a cul-de-sac that is not observed or watched over by homes. So I'm just curious about that need.
I'm happy to address those questions. Very good points. First of all, originally, the town staff indicated to us a few years ago that they wanted connectivity from Clark Farms, so that cul-de-sac, that road was intended to go down and connect down south to Springfield Court. Upon working with Clark Farms and at neighborhood meetings, we received feedback that that would not be ideal as it would bring a large amount of potential cut-through traffic. And so we went back to the drawing board and looked at the connections to Main Street and the commercial area to the west. And so we arrived at this loop road as our access point. And the cul-de-sac was required by the Town of Parker on fire to make sure there is a proper turnaround for that neighborhood because initially that road was intended to connect down to the south. So with our application, we are making, plating, and providing the land for that cul-de-sac. And there will not be any parking from our developments within that cul-de-sac. That was a concern of the neighborhoods in the north, that they didn't want residents of the future development to come in and park in the cul-de-sac. So it's really intended to be for that neighborhood to the north as a turnaround and we will have buildings that will be quite a ways set back from it, but will be backed up to it and it'll be very nicely landscaped around the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I guess, I mean, I'm curious as to this, walk me through the, this is a sketch and preliminary plat, this is more of a site plan discussion, is my understanding, or are we approving the need for this cul-de-sac to have fire trucks be able to turn around for, what is it, six homes to the north? Because there's a cul-de-sac not but 100 feet north of this. So I'm just curious as to why the burden of this cost, why? I don't understand how people are not going to park there. Are you going to have a six-foot fence or how are we, how are we going to determine that folks aren't going to take the opportunity to park on a public street? I'm a little concerned with this, but maybe we could talk more about it.
Okay, other questions, Josh?
Not right now.
Cheryl?
Yes, I've got several to start with. First of all, in looking through this, originally I understand there was 13.5 acres of commercial and now that's down to, what, 5.5? Is that correct or is it less than that?
Bless you, whoever just sneezed. Would either Brianna or Bill like to answer that one?
All right, I'm just pulling up my notes, one second.
No worries.
Would you like me to address that maybe, Brianna?
Yes, please.
So it was originally 5.5 acres, but it was replatted not by this plat, but in 2008 to be 13 point something or other. However, if you look at the map for the PD, they included as commercial all of the drainage area and swale through there. So even though it was plotted as commercial in the PD, it was never really commercial. It should have actually been a separate tract. Both the access aisle and the drainage in that area were both, should have been in a separate tract, they were just lumped in with the commercial. So there's not really any loss to the commercial area. What's happened is that those two tracks, the access aisles have stayed the same, the drainage tract has been re-engineered so that 1.86 acres of that drainage tract can be reclaimed and will be a component of the multifamily area, mostly park.
So the record is clear, the speaker is Carolyn Parkinson and she's a town planner.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay?
Okay, then another question is, with the height being listed as four-story, what was the prior with some of these other agreements on zoning and everything? What were they then? Because that's not consistent with the surrounding area.
So the PD is requesting that the multifamily piece of it be 45 feet for the building height, which essentially is a three-story building with a pitch roof. And that's what they're proposing here through their site plan application, which is a separate process.
Yeah, but on their plan, they have four-story.
I believe it's only...
Bill, can you confirm that?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I asked if Bill could, if the applicant could confirm what the height. Councilwoman Pogue is saying that she's seen that it says four stories. And so, Bill, can you confirm what it is? Or Brianna or Carolyn?
This is Bill speaking. The proposed buildings that are part of the site plan approval, that is administrative approval, are planned to be three stories and the maximum height hasn't changed from the previous PD.
Okay.
Well, that's interesting because if you look back at your details on your plan, I enlarged it and said four stories, so that's why I'm questioning what's coming up here. The next thing is, it says that you're doing trails, but I really don't see any trails. I see narrow sidewalks from your plans and your photos. Where are the trails?
So the trails will come through the site plan process. Right now, we're just looking at the layout of where the roadways will be through the plating of this property. So that will be reviewed administratively through the site plan process.
Okay, and then you are supposedly helping build this pool, but in these little more remote areas, do you have, I don't see any pocket park in the process or anything like that. What's the plan for those?
So again, through the site plan process, there are a number of parks being provided through this development. It's a requirement for the code that they provide these parks, so that will be reviewed through the site plan process.
I'm a little hesitant at this point with these preliminary plans that don't show some of these features on it. I mean, right now, it's pie in the sky, but I'm not seeing it in what you're presenting.
So to clarify, it is exactly what you said, because they're presenting the sketch and preliminary plan, they're not presenting the site plan because they don't, they're not at that stage in the process yet.
Right, when the problem is they're talking trails, I don't even see them sketched in here.
Could you bring up the slide that shows where the trail directions, those general directions are? The one with the little stars and the arrows? Just for Councilwoman Pogue's clearance, could you pull up to that slide? There you go. So you can see where they have the, go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. I can speak to that. So just for clarification point for everyone, the white dash lines are reflecting the overall pedestrian connectivity in the areas that have been approved in 2018 to the south that are under construction and then in our site as well, you see the dash lines. And that's just an indication to show how we are trying to connect this development and the ones previously approved to the greater neighborhood.
But that's primarily sidewalks, correct? Adjacent to streets?
Yes, some of them are primarily are sidewalks and we also have the continuation of some trails in the projects that were approved in 2018. As you see, south, there is one that goes diagonal from the neighborhood park to Matzenbacher and then we also have one that goes due south of the community park down to the regional trail along Todd Drive.
Okay, and what are the net increases with what you're proposing now in multifamily units versus what there was before? Because right now, you're talking 595, is that correct? That's residential units, but what part of that is multifamily?
So the annexation agreement approved 595 units. However, when this, throughout the years when this was developed, they, it was replatted and rezoned to decrease that to 493 units. 413 were plotted, this is a math exercise, I'm so sorry. And then by bringing in this new area of land that is currently unplatted today and the new 156 units, that brings us to a total of 569 units, which is less than what was approved with the annexation agreement back when this was originally...
Okay, so what's the breakdown now?
So that includes an increase of land of the 12.2 acres as well.
Okay, what is the breakdown between multifamily and single-family?
I'm sorry, can, you were breaking... I'm sorry, you were breaking up a little bit.
It's kind of, Cheryl, let her finish. Because when she's talking, the audio goes all through her, and she can't hear if you ask those questions. Councilwoman Pogue is asking what the breakdown is between multifamily and single-family.
So for the new portion of it, there are 108 condo, so multifamily units, and 46 townhome units?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, sorry. That's just with the new portion. I unfortunately don't have the breakdown for the entire development, but that's for the new portion.
So there are 156 new multifamily units, and there are existing within Oldie Town at this moment, nine multifamily units in Planning Area 2. So the total number of multifamily units in Oldie Town will be 165, seven. My mask not too hot.
Okay.
And the rest, and the rest are single-family, attached and detached and paired homes.
All right, thank you.
Cheryl, what other questions do you have?
That's it.
Okay, Jeff?
I just have a few. Can anyone tell me when the Newtown neighborhood was developed here in Parker? What year?
Eight, seven.
It was annexed in 2000.
2000, but the homes there are 20 years old now?
Some.
Okay.
Bryce.
Yeah. Bryce, just shout it out, and I'll repeat it, so you don't have to...
So the project started in 2000, but in 2008, the original developer went bankrupt.
Okay, so I'll repeat it to the microphone. So the project started in 2000, but in 2008, the original developer went bankrupt.
And they built about a third of the homes.
They built about a third of the homes.
Okay, so then most of the homes, Bryce, how, most of the homes built there were built somewhere 2008 on?
So we're having a problem here, because we got to keep a record.
Yeah, we're bringing him up, because he's going to have more questions.
Okay. Go ahead, Bryce.
So I apologize, I didn't realize my answer was going to be so long. So... Bryce, can you introduce yourself? Yeah, my name is Bryce Matthews. I'm a planning manager with the town. So in 2000, the project started in earnest, was annexed into the town. Newtown was the name of the developer at the time. They made it through 2008, the Great Recession occurred. They went bankrupt. They'd built about a third of the homes there. So about a third of the homes, I'd say, are 2004, 2008 vintage. After that, Brian Beiler, Pacific North, picked up the remainder of it and has been building new homes since then. So the remainder are under construction. There are lots that are not constructed yet. So it's an active single-family duplex site for, I'd say, about half the site at this point.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, as I understand it, this property, the larger parcel here that were, and this may be from Mr. Mahar, was purchased in 2017? Correct the 10-acre parcel?
Yes, that is correct.
Or the bulk bit, okay. And then, we are looking, today, the zoning on that is residential? And then the little lots around it are commercial?
The zoning today, and staff can confirm, but is agricultural on the 10-acre parcel.
Okay.
That's correct.
And then the proposed zoning, just to clarify, is mixed-use commercial?
It is the extension of the Old Town original PD. It is being added, that 10 acres is being added to the original PD for the entire neighborhood. And it is divided into two planning areas, one for the condominiums, the owner-occupied condominiums, that is Planning Area 9. And Planning Area 10 is for the single-family attached homes. All of the housing throughout the entire PD is divided into planning areas. And so this 10 acres has two planning areas for both types of housing.
Okay, and Mr. Mahar, one more question for you while I have you. You noted in your presentation that you met with the residents of your community in 16, 17, 18, and 19. So do you feel like there's harmony within the neighborhood to this development? Would it shock you if people come and speak against it? What is your feel that the neighborhood supports this project?
Sure, very, very good question. I know that there are people that are not happy about developments within their neighborhood, and I'm not sure if it's directed at this development, or if it will be any other, any other type of development. It is always hard with development happening in neighborhoods in my kind of occupation. I see it on lots of projects. And we have been very sincere and have been very open to speak with people, address their concerns. In fact, the town staff, to their credit, did a repeat, as you know, of the planning commission just this past week, to ensure that the public was heard within the neighborhood. And we applauded you on that effort. So we have met with the HOA, the Metro District, and had four meetings, and also many meetings on-site to work through ideas, comments, issues that have been ongoing.
Okay, but specific to the meetings that you had, 16, 17, what was your takeaway from those meetings? Was there general harmony within the neighborhood? Was there discord at this idea? What was the feeling that you walked away with?
It was, there were some people that were supportive of the project, and some that were not as supportive, definitely, which is very typical of a lot of neighborhood meetings that we engage with. So we, we understand their concerns about, you know, development within their neighborhood. It changes hard. But we definitely felt that there were a lot of people that were supporting the project as well.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Debbie?
No questions.
John?
Wow, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here, where do I start? So I received a couple of emails, and I want to advocate for those people. This is a quasi-judicial process, so I apologize for not getting back to you. But, you know, I just want to be a person who can be unbiased. So to me, I would like to go down and just go through the, I guess, challenges that were presented. You know, number one, and some of these might just be similar to Councilmember Pogue's answers regarding trails and parks, but parking, I don't know if, that might be an our, you know, Town of Parker question. Some people had potential challenges with shortage of parking. And I guess, maybe Bryce, since you're here live and in person, you can sort of articulate, when is the right time to talk about parking? Is it now, in a rezoned discussion, or is it in the future at a site plan discussion?
So that analysis will happen during the site plan. They have submitted a site plan that is under review today.
Okay.
The site plan that they've proposed meets our parking standards, and the town will not support or approve a proposal that doesn't meet the parking standards.
Okay, so that was my, that was my follow-up question there. There was a comment regarding underground parking. Could you maybe enlighten me? I don't think we have underground parking here specifically for something like this multifamily. Could you, and again, I know it's a rezone, but could you give me some background on what that would look like, and would there be significant challenges?
So you're correct. I'm unaware of any residential underground parking at this point. We do have a parking garage up at the hospital, but, so they are proposing underground parking for some of the parking for some of the condo units. And in terms of the challenges of that, I mean, from a planning perspective, that will be private parking for those private residents, and it will show that they've met the standard. Beyond that, it'll have to be engineered property through building permit and those types of things.
Okay.
But it's certainly a common, common type of parking in many jurisdictions around the metro.
Thank you. The next, I guess, theme or item is traffic. It seems like the challenge is, or the concern is, the new development would be disruptive to the neighborhood. And, you know, I don't know, Danette, if you want to kind of pull up maybe something that shows the road network. And Mr. Mahar, maybe you can sort of walk through me, walk through this with me. I think the concern is, people would go back into the neighborhood and utilize the streets and create a higher level of congestion. You know, I see a couple of access points. So maybe from your professional eyes, you could sort of articulate, is that concern in your eyes justified? Or are there alternative routes which would be, which would allow getting people to north, south, east, and west?
If possible, I would like to direct this question to Tyler, who reviewed this application from an engineering perspective.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Brianna. Obviously, there's going to be some...
Tyler, Tyler, if you could introduce yourself, your name and your position with the town?
Okay, sorry, I'm Tyler Sant. I'm a development review engineer for the Town of Parker. And I reviewed this traffic study in conjunction with the town traffic engineer and engineering services manager. As I said, with any new development, there will be traffic generated. The traffic study assumed that between 10% to 20% of the trips generated by this development could potentially head south. That would be the only reason for any cut-through traffic. Obviously, it will depend on the preferred route by the people who are taking these roads. But that would amount to basically anywhere between 100 to 200 trips, which is well below the threshold that if you, in addition to the 300 trips that we see on this road already, that's well below the threshold that we allow per our engineering criteria.
So, I mean, do you have sort of a ballpark? Because, you know, I'm a, I'm a number and spreadsheet guy. You know, could you sort of articulate what may be the maximum threshold for a, for a street such as this residential road? When would you start to be concerned? I mean, I understand well below, that's a very vague term. Can you give me a ballpark as to, we're at 300, but, and with an additional 100, we're at 400, but this street can handle X without us having any challenges?
No, I don't think that question's vague at all. Our hard engineering criteria has a 2,000 vehicle per day maximum for a local road. Now, we don't like to push it to that threshold. We like to stay closer to about 1,000. That's where you see most of our roads now, and it's, we observe very few issues, if any, with it. And with the counts they took before the pandemic, plus the worst-case scenario generation from this site, that would put us around 400 to 500 trips on that road per day.
Okay, so we're...
So below the threshold, and also below our, call it, preference.
Okay, thank you. The next, the next section is property values. And again, I don't, I mean, I think we've, we've had this with a couple of other projects throughout my eight years here. I really don't know how to address this. I respect very much the professionals who provided this information to the people who emailed in. But I think the last, the last thing this came up with was a transmission line that we had. And I tried to do a little bit of amateur sleuthing, and it seemed as though the values along that corridor are consistent, if not more, with, with the home values to the interior and a few blocks away. So again, I don't want to create conjecture, but I don't know how to address that. So I would, I would like to punt on that after, after making that statement. And then, the next theme is basically the builder. Neighborhood improvements, maybe not complete. This might be a Newtown, you know, a change from Newtown to Pacific North, but there's, somebody mentioned $200,000 of cash in lieu. Why do we need the density to create a revenue stream when the money is already there for the improvements that we were promised? So maybe, Mr. Mahar, or somebody on your team, could you maybe walk us through the financial part of this equation? You know, is density needed to drive this improvement, or this Metro District, or this HOA to solvency? And please, provide some backup to me. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. I will defer to Brian Beiler, who is on this Zoom meeting tonight, to speak to that. And there is also a representative from the Metro District that I understand would like to speak to that as well, as he was integral to those discussions. Brian, do you have any comments to add to that?
Ryan, could you please raise your hand in Zoom? I don't, I don't see him.
Okay.
Okay, just a second.
It looks like his hand is raised under an attendee.
Under what name?
Brian Beiler.
Are you saying Brian?
Brian with E. He is a boy.
I think she was looking for Ryan.
Yeah.
One of the slowdowns of technology, sorry, guys. Okay. And then, is he on there now?
Looks like Brian is in the room.
There he is. All right, Brian, go ahead.
Brian, are you there?
I see you there, and you're unmuted on our end, Brian. Oh, now he's muted. There he is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I don't know what happened there, but my name's Brian Beiler with Pacific North. And to give some background to the financial implications, you know, as Bill mentioned, we've been working on this project since 2016, and I say the project as a whole. We worked with the Metro District to restructure the Metro District bonds, and city council approved that, I believe, about two years ago. And that's Town of Parker City Council. And what that meant was the inclusion of this property and that density was work together with the Metro District for a long time to facilitate not only the building of the pool, but the restructuring of the bonds. Because when the old developer went bankrupt, a casualty of that was the Metro District lost all its funding because the project wasn't complete, and they were actually upside down, for lack of a better way to say it. Now, Metro District is a government agency, and it cannot go bankrupt.
Ah, technology, I think we lost, did we lose them?
You guys there?
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Last we heard was that they can't go bankrupt.
You might want to turn this video off.
Yeah, so they, the Metro District can't go bankrupt. So there's an additional mill levy that was assessed on the properties out there that most people were unaware of. But the bigger deal was that those district bonds would never be paid off. And so that money would accrue and accrue, and the interest would accrue, and the compounding mill levy would accrue. So what we worked with, the Metro District, before, after we bought the property, before we ended up selling the property to Meritage so they could complete the construction of the single-family homes and duplex homes, we worked with the Metro District to include this property that we bring before you tonight with that density. And that allowed the restructuring of the bonds, that allowed the sale of the previous developments and Meritage Homes, that allowed for almost $2 million to go to the Town of Parker to widen Motsenbacher. Parker to widen Motts and Barker and all those related improvements. So it was really a big deal two years ago that this property was included with the density that's before you tonight, that allowed the bonds to be restructured and basically facilitate the completion of this entire development that has been bankrupt and kind of dysfunctional since 2008. So while most people don't realize that, Bill and I explained that to neighborhood meetings previously. I believe Carolyn was there, trying to educate the complexity of this broken project and how we all had to work together to bring it to fruition. But just to reiterate, the key to that was the density and the restructuring of the bonds and the approval of that by town council almost two years ago, based upon the density that we're showing you tonight. So hopefully, that gives some background to the financial implications and challenges that we've been dealing with on these sites.
Okay, John did that.
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's another person that I just saw a chat message indicating from, from their side, I'm sorry, Pacific North's side, that would like to create additional comment before I have another question, a follow-up, please.
I think the last name was Rhimerleer.
Yeah.
Is that part of public hearing, or?
No, he's an HOA rep, I believe.
Yeah, I thought there was going to be maybe some.
So is that, is that a public comment one, or is that a question you have for representative?
No, no, well, I was giving them the opportunity to further their, their, their discussion on, on the financial matters. If there's no further, I'm happy to have a follow-up question.
Yeah, I would suggest Councilmember Dyak, that's beyond the scope of the applicant, that certainly the HOA person can testify during public comment.
Okay.
Okay, so John, your last, your next question?
Let's see here, let's see, fiscal burden, roads, services, we need more infrastructure. I think that, again, I think is in a different segment, Bryce. You know, from referral process, do you want to maybe enlighten people who are concerned about the infrastructure in the school district and how they give us information? It's not a rezone, it's something, it's at a future point.
So, so part of any one of our processes, rezoning, Platts, site plans, is a referral process. We send the information out to other entities, the school district, utilities, police department, all those folks, and seek their input about being, again, overly burdensome on the system, those types of things.
Yeah.
And we depend on their responses as to whether, whether we need to make amendments as part of the proposal we bring before you, or we, where we review administratively or not. In this particular situation, you can see there's a letter from the school district in there regarding fees in lieu and, and an additional fee.
Okay.
That they'll be, that the applicant will be paying to the school district.
Okay. Councilmember Pogue talked about the height, 45 foot, three-story, the pitch roof. Again, is this the right time to talk about building heights and setbacks, or is that another part of this process?
So, so for the zoning, that is the maximum height, so that's the right time to talk about the maximum height permitted in the zoning. And then for the site plan, we will confirm through that process that it meets the zoning that's in place.
And just for a rule of thumb, I know there's a commercial building there. I believe it's a two-story. In terms of height, do we have sort of a ballpark on how tall that is, just for context?
Sure. So a two-story building, commercial, you assume about 15 feet per floor. And then if there are any HVAC above it, it's, let's say, five feet.
Okay.
So a two-story commercial building, somewhere in the 30 to 35-foot range for a residential building, assume 10 to 12 feet, 12 feet for a higher-end product per floor. And they typically have a pitch on their roof.
Yeah.
And so that's going to add some height on there. So 40 to 45 feet is reasonable for a three-story building.
Okay.
You're probably not going to see a four-story building in there, because you'd have to have a flat roof, and they'd be, it'd be pretty cramped.
And if.
And just to be clear, what they're proposing in the site plan that's in review is a three-story building with a pitched roof.
Okay. And if, if, if we had something like that from a setback standpoint, how far away would it be from a property line? I think that would probably be a concern of, of the residents who are adjacent to this.
So right now, again, we're kind of blending between zoning and, and site plan and plat. But right now, the proposal that's before us that we're reviewing has a 70-foot setback to some residents, to the back of the lots of single-family for the, for the condos, 50 feet, I think it's 54 feet in another location. Setback from the building to the back property line of the residential.
Yeah.
And then on the south, for the townhomes, I want to say it's again 53, 54 feet from the townhome property line to the single-family residential property lines.
And we'll have trees and stuff to, you know, help.
Absolutely, it'll be landscaped.
All right. And I mean, to me, it's, you know, I guess the only other thing, ag was mentioned, and that, that kind of brings me back to sort of, how did we get here? I remember kind of sitting as a council member candidate, and Councilmember Lassiter was talking about donut holes. And, you know, I, the only thing I was thinking of was Dunkin' Donuts at that time. But it's, donut holes mentions enclave properties. And what that means is there's a piece of unincorporated Douglas County land that is surrounded by the Town of Parker. And we did a, we council, and I think council previous, based on a former council member, Lassiter, and his comments, sort of gave, gave direction to, to staff to close those donut holes, or, you know, bring those enclaves in to kind of true up our boundaries, so we don't have little pockets. And we still do at this point in time. So when, when this was brought in, it was brought in with the same zoning that, that I think it had at, at the point in time where we annexed it in. So we could involuntarily or voluntarily annex a piece of property if the Town of Parker surrounds it. And to clean this up, I don't know if it was an involuntary one, I'm looking at the, the town attorney, if it was involuntary or voluntary.
Bryce, can you, can you answer that question?
Yeah, it was an involuntary annexation.
Okay.
It was zoned agricultural out in the county. And so when we annexed it, we aligned our current zoning with what the closest we had to the county's ag zoning, which is agricultural.
Yeah, so I mean, I mean, a couple of things I picked up on here in my eight years is when you see ag zoning in the Town of Parker, it's, it's, it really won't exist as ag. It's, it's a temporary zoning to get you to something else. There's also another term, I don't think it's a zoning term, but unbuildable tracts. So those two terms, if, if you see them specifically within the Town of Parker's limits, you know something different is going to be there. And, you know, it's unfortunate if somebody looked at that and said, there's a, there's a, you know, a farm or something like that, and relied upon that information without coming down and maybe talking to one of our great staff people at the planning desk. But, you know, I think, I just wanted to sort of, you know, kind of, how do we get to here? It was, it was sort of a council directive to staff to close these enclave properties, which involuntary, involuntarily brought in this piece of property into the Town of Parker, so we could zone it to something different than ag. And I think that's where, that's where we're at right now. So I think at this point in time, Mayor, I don't have anything else. I'm just trying to distill this information and get maybe some of these thoughts addressed.
Okay.
Mayor, I got one more, I apologize.
Okay.
I've got engineering on, if, if we could bring Tyler back in and just speak to the roundabout, or I'm sorry, to the cul-de-sac. Is it, is it a hydrant in the cul-de-sac? Is there access for a reason there? Can, or can, can town engineering speak to the, to the dead-end cul-de-sac, please?
Yeah, I'm pulling up my Parker Water later here. So I am not showing, I'm not showing a hydrant in that area. As I believe Bill mentioned, the intention was to have Springfield Court punch all the way through this development into that neighborhood. And as they mentioned, that was undesirable to the neighbors. And the, the intention is to seal off that, that road. We don't, we don't typically, or we never have just edges of asphalt unless the, unless the road's going to be continued. Now that it's not going to be continued, the fire department would like a turnaround. To Councilman Verro's point, there is a knuckle right there, but when it comes to access, the fire department will take as much as they can. And we don't like to just have, we don't like to just end roads arbitrarily when they're not going to be punched through. We want them to be cul-de-sacs.
Okay, thank you very much. Cheryl?
Yes, I have two more questions. One is, there is a huge drainage area here, which you're allowing a 25-foot easement on, but it doesn't show where you're putting the water. It ends at a street, and that's not, for that size of a drainage area, what are you going to do with it? It doesn't make sense from what I'm seeing.
Could you potentially elaborate on which area you're seeing this drainage end? I've got the plan up in front of me as well.
It's right on the south side of Main Street.
The south side of Main Street, okay. So what they're doing is, there's an existing detention pond there, and they are expanding, formalizing, and modernizing the pond. It's outdated. And so the, the flows will eventually make it to that pond, all the flows from this development. And they will be detained temporarily, it's a dry pond, and they will release at the same historical rate as the pre-development flows. So if I can, after the flows leave the pond, they enter an existing storm sewer that gets routed to the east.
Okay, I just didn't see anything on a referral from like urban drainage, that's why, and then when I didn't see that being taken care of, I was wondering how you were going to do that. The next question I have is Parker Water and Sand District said they are not in the district. Where are they, what are they doing with their, how are they getting their water? What are they doing with their sewage?
So I can address that. They were not, they are now. They couldn't come to hearing because they had not been through the board for inclusion into the district, but they have been included into the district now.
That wasn't in the packet here.
I can't speak to that.
I believe there is a letter added as an attachment to the planning commission packet, which is an attachment to the town council packet, so.
Okay.
It's attachment on attachment.
Thank you very much. Council, other questions before we go to public comment? Okay. So, hey, public comment, I'm not doing, being mean or anything on this, but we have some council members with the bladders of little children. And I just want to make sure that if anyone needs a potty break before, since we've got 66 people there. Okay? Well, I'm not looking at you, I was looking at you as an excuse. Hey, everyone at home, I need to take a three-minute recess to use the restroom real quick, because I drank all of my lemonade. So, Council, are you cool if we have a quick three-minute potty break before we go to public comment?
Yes.
Motion?
We will, but I'm looking at you before I ask for the motion. Okay, I'd like a motion for a three-minute bathroom break.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Debbie, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, everyone stay where you're at, we'll be back on in three minutes.[1400.51] Mr. Matthews, could you please speak to my phantom cul-de-sac and the need for it and why it's displaced maybe possible parking and/or building movement or whatever, please?
Sure, absolutely. The reason the cul-de-sac is there is as a fire code requirement. When, when the Clark Farms Road was decided not to be a through street, we administer the fire code, and it allows for fire trucks to turn around at the end of that road and also to provide service to Clark Farms as well. And so it's a fire code requirement that this plat then implements.
Thank you, sir. That was the answer I was looking for. Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment. The way public comment is working, since this is in our virtual new world here, we've got participants here in the Zoom meeting. You're going to raise your hand using Zoom. Danette's keeping a list of everybody who's raising their hand, and she will go through individually and choose you and unmute you so you can give your public comment. You will need to state your name and address for the record. Oh, go ahead and whoever that was, let's mute yourself until we're ready to go. State your name and address for the record once it's your time for public comment. After you state your name and address, I'm going to hit the timer on my fancy-dancy little timer that we can see here, and you guys can't since you're at home. There's a three-minute time limit. While you're giving public comment, when it gets down to 30 seconds, for your edification benefit, I will say 30 seconds. So it'll sound like I'm interrupting you, but I just want to give you a heads up before it gets to the end. When it gets to the end, Carol?
Mr. Mayor, could you please ask them to spell their last name?
Absolutely.
And if their first name is a difficult name, to spell that also.
Wonderful. So if you didn't hear that at home, when you state your name and address for the record, please spell your last name, and if your first name is difficult, spell that as well. When you get to the end of the three minutes, I will thank you for your time. Danette will mute you and move on, and then she will call the next person up. Everyone kosher? You good, Danette?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so let's go ahead and, Danette, go ahead and call the first one, and you'll state your name and address, spelling your last name for the record, please.
Okay, the first we have is under the name of Divya, D-I-V-Y-A.
Okay, Divya, if you could state your name and address, spelling your last name for the record, please. Okay, Divya, going once? Going twice? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the next one, Danette.
Okay, the next one is Becky, Becky Beaufencamp.
Okay, Becky, if you could state your name and address and spell that last name for us, for the record, please.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and state your name and address.
Okay, perfect. My name is Rebecca Beaufencamp, and I live at 17320 Paoli Way on the Clark Farms side, and my last name is spelled B like boy, O F like Frank, E N K A M P.
Fantastic.
And I'm used to spelling my last name for folks.
I can't imagine you've had to spell that before for anybody.
Yes, yes, I have. S-M-I-T-H.
You're good to go.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to give public comment on this project. I am a longtime Parker resident since 1995, and I have watched the culture of my neighborhood change, primarily due to rental properties in my neighborhood, and not in a good way. I realize that the developer has met the legal requirements for notice, and while my property does not border the parcel in question, so I'm not actually legally entitled to notice, even though I live five houses down from the property line, I was unaware of any public meetings, planning, outreach, hearings, get-togethers, et cetera, and did not know about the zoning change request until the chain-linked fence went up around the property last year and a sign went up notifying folks of zoning change. Let me be clear. My displeasure is with this development, and specifically the addition of condominium units into this development. During the planning hearing on July 20th, it was stated, one of the reasons for approval of the condos, in spite of several public objections, was to provide lower-cost, affordable housing and the opportunity for homeownership. With that said, how does town council plan on enforcing an owner-occupied condo complex should you choose to approve this rezone? What safeguards are going to be in place to ensure investors don't purchase these condos and proceed to exploit those people searching for any housing in Parker? Because housing is at a premium here by renting them out.
You've got one minute left, Becky.
Yep. As for the cul-de-sac, who is going to enforce the no parking on the Clark Farms side? I walked out front while you guys were taking your break, and there is no fire hydrant up there. The only fire hydrant on Paoli Way is directly across the street from my house. Parker Fire, and I get it that maybe the town code has changed over the years, but there is opportunity to turn around up there. And I get it that maybe fire does need that extra space, but it seems to me it's just a place for people to park. So is it going to fall to the residents of Clark Farms and Paoli Way to call Parker Police for parking enforcement? Because I can tell you, it looks like a used car lot on our street already with the number of rental properties that exist in our neighborhood as it is. I would also like to know if the builder or the developer can tell me, who in Clark Farms was consultant on this?
Thank you, Becky, your time's up.
Was it the homeowners association?
Thank you very much, Becky. We'll go ahead and, your three minutes are up, Becky. Thank you very much.
And?
Danette, go ahead to the next one.
The next is Missy Yarborough.
Hi, this is Missy Yarborough. Can you hear me?
We can. If you go ahead and state your name and address and spell your last name for us.
Sure. Legal name is Mary, last name is Yarborough, Y-A-R-B-R-O-U-G-H, 17195 East Springfield Court. So basically, my house backs this proposed commercial area, and my front door is going to be facing these proposed condos. So I'm a single mom. I've worked my ass off to get this home and to be in this area for a reason. I have my own business. I run a business out of my home, so I respect the whole Parker community and supporting your business and whatnot, right? But nobody said, when I bought this home, that this was happening. Nobody told me this. I paid a lot of money for this house, so I would like to maintain my property value because I, from every possible conclusion can come up with, this will definitely decrease my property value, let alone the great lot that we have. This is a beautiful piece of property here. And from what I've heard these proposed people talk about, like, access to paths and stuff, we already have that. I run every day. I walk every day. I have perfect access. We already have that. There is nothing that this community is going to bring that is going to promote physical activity. We already have it. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. It already exists. So with that being said, I don't really care about the politics behind this because we're talking about the here and now. We're talking about the future, moving forward. So whatever happened in the past, really, get over it. We're talking about our future right now, and that's important to us. So I guess what I really want to say is, none of the reasons why this proposed planning thing are good to me. None of it makes sense. So if you're going to develop it, it's a beautiful plot of land. Do it right. Do it right. I can tell you right now, my house, since I purchased it, it's already sunk. This is not a good drainage area, okay?
30 seconds.
My foundation is already, like, going down. So take note. I'm telling you that. I know, because my countertop, the water, like, pours off the edge of it. What does that mean? Your foundation has sunk. So I'm just telling you, the whole drainage issue, I would be definitely aware of that. I don't know. I guess that's it. It's just, there's so many things. Carolyn, you're awesome.
Thank you very much, Missy. We got your time there.
So I'm done.
Go ahead and go to the next one then, Danette.
Okay, the next is Rolando.
Okay. Rolando, are you there?
Rolando, you're unmuted.
There we go. Rolando, go ahead and say something so we can see that you're there. No?
Rolando, I show that you are not muted, so you should be able to go ahead and speak.
I'm going to make a note that, Rolando, we weren't able to, so let's go ahead and move to the next, and then we'll come back to Rolando and try him at the end. So if you'll go ahead and go back to the next one.
Sarah Lubchenko.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We sure can. Sarah, go ahead and state your name and address, spelling your last name for the record, please.
Absolutely. Sarah Lubchenko, S-A-R-A, last name L-U-B as in boy, C-H-E-N as in Nancy, C-O.
Wonderful. Go right ahead.
17474 East Newtown Parkway.
Perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. I would like to thank everybody's time and consideration in this public comment period. There are just a number of concerns. I've been very vocal about the developments and key items I don't feel like the developer has addressed, nor has the Town of Parker fully answered for me. And as I was listening today, it could be a combination of my comments aren't falling in line with the right phase in the plan, but considering the preliminary drawings aren't meshing up with Parker code and standards, I don't want something to fall through the cracks that we will ultimately have to suffer if due diligence isn't, isn't provided upfront and no forethought is given on the front end. So parking is a big concern in this neighborhood. Right now, with the number of units that are proposed versus the number of parking spaces that are allowed to include some street parking, mind you, they are still 20 spaces short by my count. I could be looking at dated plans, I don't know, but no one's been able to answer that question for me, aside from, the Town of Parker will ensure that our codes are followed prior to finalization of the plan, and that answer, I'm sorry, just doesn't pass for me. Traffic flow is also a big concern. One of the improvements that the developer had boasted is punching through a pedestrian access to an American Academy. What they failed to do in their traffic study was account for parents utilizing that pedestrian punch-through as an alternative drop-off route, as opposed to going to the front of the American Academy building like they're supposed to, and utilizing our neighborhood as a drop-off point so they don't have to sit in line. We already do have a big flux of American Academy traffic that cuts through our neighborhood instead of running south towards, I think it's Todd Street, the new, the new road that heads out towards Jordan, and it's a problem. We've had Parker PB clock somebody going 45 miles an hour in front of our park on Newtown Parkway. So this is a big concern that I don't think anybody's given any credence to. And again, it just goes to the conformity of the neighborhood. The new development doesn't match our neighborhood. We're looking at property value losses. We bought this property knowing that that land was zoned as agriculture, and I heard the donut hole analogy.
30 seconds.
We would not have bought in this property, this property, if we knew condos were going in, let alone a three-story unit with underground parking. And then lastly, I don't believe anything that the developer says to be true. We were promised the pool would be open May of 2019. It is now August 2020, and the pool is still not open. I don't care about the new pictures of water in it until my kids can slash in it. It does not count. Additionally, he spoke to trees that would be replaced. I don't see any trees in our neighborhood.
Sarah, thank you very much. Your time's up. We're going to go ahead and go to the next person.
Sorry. Brandy Wilks.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead, Brandy, and state your name and address for the record and spell your last name for us.
Yeah, my name is Brandy Wilks. Last name is spelled W-I-L-K-S. My address is 17402 East Newtown Parkway, Parker 80134.
Okay, go right ahead.
So I just wanted to address really quick, and I am going to talk kind of fast, so I'm sorry, but I have read the entire master plan for 2035 for Parker, and there are definitely sections, Chapter 8, Page 8.7 and 8.8, it clearly states residential neighborhoods are such an essential aspect of our community that you guys will protect to enhance existing neighborhoods through the plan. It will ensure that the development demonstrates compatibility with and sensitivity to existing neighborhood characteristics, or, sorry, characteristics, I can talk, and that you will continue to encourage low-density housing neighborhoods. It also says that we are medium-density residential areas, and we're actually really close to being on the fringe of low-density, but per the master plan, it says that the medium-density is 3.5 dwelling units per acre, which we are definitely not going to be at if we do the condos. So let me just make this clear. I want this land to be developed. I really do. I want our neighborhood to be complete. I think it's going to be beautiful. All I'm asking is that it be developed with single-family homes or attached single-family homes, as there are zero three-story condos west of Cherry Creek in Parker. We have condos, and per the master plan, it actually says that the, it will be primarily at Parker's Downtown, the Parker Road corridor and the E470 corridor. I did submit an email that has several different locations that already have existing multifamily units, which I think would be great for the developer to go and add more down there where there's already existing. But to put, put them here in our neighborhood where they're all single-family and attached single-family homes is very non-conforming and just doesn't fit with Parker. My family's been in Parker since 78. I'm a true Parkerite, and again, I want that land developed. I just want it developed with single-family or attached single-family that's already conforming to our neighborhood. The other thing is, I can have on your desks tomorrow morning over 150 signatures from homeowners in Newtown and Clark Farms that were not even made aware of these condos. The developer, I've been at all of those meetings, I've been at our HOA meetings, so yes, I am aware, but I have literally been talking to everybody and went door to door, and we, they were not made aware. So the HOA does not speak for the majority. The HOA speaks for very few people. The other thing that I just want to add out there is, our master plan is amazing. I literally read every single page of it today, and there is not a single thing that I disagree with in the master plan. But per the master plan, it should not be put right here in this area. It should be put further down Main Street and on the Parker corridor and the E470 corridor where there's already existing. So I know I'm down to like 20 seconds, so thank you guys very much. I'm so sorry if I spoke too fast, and I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thanks.
Thanks, Brandy. You actually had 17 and a half seconds left, so you did a fantastic job. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go to the next one.
Dusty Talent.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. Dusty, go ahead and state your name and address for the record and spell your last name, please.
Full name is Dustin, with a D, last name Talent, T-A-L-L-A-N-T. My address is 17197 East Springfield Court.
Okay, go right ahead, Dusty.
So I'm under the same setup, and I want to refer to some of Bill's comments in his section where the council asked him specifically if he was aware of any disconsent within those meetings that were set up. And I can tell you that I attended all of them, and there were far more against than for this development. I do applaud them for trying to listen. They have not added any additional trail access to it. They are talking about this east access that goes to Cherry Creek that is already just a sidewalk. They're talking about adding one sidewalk to the south of us that will meet up at Todd Farms. That is the only trail access and/or community access plans outside of the existing sidewalks that they have addressed within this plan. Parking, my backyard will be directly next to the commercial units, as well as surrounded in the back by seven townhomes, which in his initial plan was supposed to be the condo unit, so they did move those after conversations with them. The biggest thing is, I do want the, I want the area developed. I think it deserves to be. I think that will be a benefit for our community. It is not a condo plot. There is no room for that and/or space or what we would want there. Community access, there is already traffic, just like they talked about through American Academy. I have to deal with that on a recurring basis with people zooming up our street already. It will only get worse when you connect that to Main Street through those commercial zones. There will be parking along that street. We had a fire truck here not too long ago. There was no access to get up that road. They already had to back out and go three different times before you could add, you add additional parking for those units. That's going to become a problem for that. So yes, I do believe the area should be, should be zoned and should be built out accordingly, but not with the condo units. Multifamily, single-family, that is what I've been a part of in Parker since I moved here in 2008. I fully support that, fully appreciate the developers' look to do the community improvements. The pool, there is still a sign out there that says, "Opening spring of 2020." So he is behind, and they are behind on one of the most basic promises that they've given the community, let alone trying to build three-story condos with underground parking. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dusty. Appreciate it. All right, Danette, next up.
Ken.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. Ken, if you can spell your, if you could state your name and address for the record, spelling your last name, please.
Yes, it's Ken Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-T-S. I live at 17310 Paoli Way. Thank you for hearing me this evening. To the council and the mayor, I'm against this development for the three-story complex they plan on putting in. It does not go with any of the neighborhoods around it. It's going to be an eyesore, blocking views. The traffic is going to be horrific. I know the engineer was on, but apparently he's not been out here for when American Academy is in session. My road is a zoo. Every morning and every evening, I can't even get to my house because of the way people pull in, park, do U-turns, pick up spaces, they'll park in front of your driveway. pull in, park, do U-turns, pick up spaces, they'll park in front of your driveway. That cul-de-sac that they're gonna put in is gonna be a parking zoo. There's not gonna be anyone to enforce it. I've had numerous conversations with the police department. They rarely even come out. You can call, they're blocking fire hydrants in the very start of the street. There's no one coming out to help us out in this neighborhood from all of the traffic that's coming from American Academy and now you're gonna add in these duplex and condominiums that is gonna be even worse. The property values are also gonna go down. That's a big concern in this area now. I don't understand why we can't just put in single-family homes in this development, but apparently that doesn't either generate enough funds or money or what, but all of the comments from the people before, there's a lot of people on this street that are unhappy with the direction that this development has gone. It's gone through several stages and people are selling homes that have been longtime residents on this street because of this development going in. They're tired of dealing with the traffic. We weren't told all of the traffic problems when American Academy went in and you can call American Academy all you want to, there's nothing they can do. They talk to the parents, but apparently they don't care or listen because it's not their neighborhood. I would like to counsel the bails to address that as well as if they don't change this condominiums to vote no on this development and I appreciate you listening.
All right. Ken, thank you very much. Danette, next up.
Crystal Jacob.
Can you hear me?
We sure can. If you could state your name and address, spell in your last name, please.
Yes, my name is Crystal Jacob, last name J-A-C-O-B and my address is 11205 Paxton Court.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you so much for hearing me tonight. I am a resident of Clark Farms to the north and I was actually really shocked because today was the first I've even heard about this development. And what really concerns me is the fact that those multifamily condos, you know, with safety and property value going down, that is a great concern to me because when we moved to Parker and when we purchased in Clark Farms, this was not even something that we thought would ever happen. The other thing is that I am actually also a teacher at American Academy and yes, we do send out emails and we do ask our parents to stop parking in the neighborhoods, however, that doesn't always work and we send those out regularly and the traffic is honestly really bad during our carpool hours. But more so what concerns me is that if I'm reading that map right, those condos will be looking directly into my classroom and that is of great concern to me considering that we have class going on and we also have students playing on that playground and we don't really know who is living in those condos with so many people in those buildings. However, I would like to say that I do believe that development of that land would be wonderful for Parker, for Clark Farms, for Newtown. I just don't feel that condos is the answer. Thank you so much for your time.
Crystal, thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, Danette, next up.
Chase Hackett.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. My name is Chase Hackett, H-A-C-K-E-T-T. I live at 17124 East Cedar Gulch Drive and I would like to echo some of the other comments by first stating that I'm certainly a proponent of development of this area. I think it would be great for our town and our community. However, I do have some concerns as well. First, I'd like to comment on Mr. Mahar's comment on the signage improvements and I would like to point out that we did have existing signage on both the Jordan Road entry to the west as well as the Motzenbacher entry to the east and all of the signage was Newtown Village and they stripped those signs down and they have not yet replaced them and I presume that is because of potential confusion of the naming of the Cenderos community and they didn't want to mislead people or lose out on the traffic. Where we live on East Cedar Gulch Drive, we are a private road. We're in a newer development that was developed by Berkeley Homes just a few years ago and there's about 30 to 40 homes and we live on a private road, so as homeowners through the association, we are responsible for maintaining that road, snow removal as well as a reserve fund for improvements. Let alone from the construction traffic for the pool, we have a very significant traffic flow through our road and it is a very skinny road. There's a lot of families. The safety concerns of the traffic increase through that road is definitely a huge concern as well as the wear and tear on the road that as homeowners, we're the ones responsible for repairing that. I would also express concerns that a large multifamily unit like this is non-conforming to our community, as many people have said. And also, the big concern I have is with the pool that we look to be finally getting the capacity. I just can't see it being able to handle an additional 160 families or almost 160 homes. That seems very significant. And the last thing I would like to mention is, to my knowledge, I believe that-
Thirty seconds.
The president of the Newtown Master Association, I believe, is also a member of the Metro District Board and I believe that says that the approval of this development from the HOA obviously is to the benefit of someone who is on both and to me, that's a conflict of interest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Chase.
Bee Cullum.
Okay. Bee, if you could state your name and address for the record and spell your last name, please.
Yes, my name is Bonnie Cullum. Last name C-U-L-L-O-M and we live at 11201 Paxton Court. I feel the same way as many of the other community members who've spoken. I had no idea that this was going to be built into condos that were three stories high until someone else from the neighborhood let me know today, so I'm very thankful for that, but it's also disconcerting to me that it's been purported that we all knew about this and are cool with it because I don't think very many people at all seem to know about it, that we're gonna be pretty directly affected. It's already a big concern how fast people drive on Main Street and how much traffic there is. Right at Main Street and Motzenbacher, that's a main way for kids to get to school from our side of Clark Farms and to the park and to the pool and it's already dangerous. Adding that many houses and condos would only increase the traffic and the danger of so many cars going by. Also echoing the traffic problems with American Academy, we already deal with that and that's something that isn't people living here. That's a thing that just occurs like a tide goes in and out. This would be permanent. Lastly, I just don't think the condos fit with this area. It's not a big enough space there. It's gonna be really crowded and there aren't other condos here, so it's not congruent with what's going on. So, thank you so much and thank you to everyone else who spoke.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Okay, Danette.
Jennifer.
Hello.
Hi, Jennifer. If you could state your name and address for the record and spell your last name.
My name is Jennifer Lindquist, spelled L-I-N-D-Q-U-I-S-T and I reside at 17258 East Newtown Parkway. And I just wanted to follow up as unfortunately, many of the people before me, I feel like I have to speak quickly to make sure that all of my points are registered and I just wanna start by saying I have about seven points. Number one, I am obviously concerned with fire rescue access. Number two, the pool has been behind by the builder by about two years, which obviously leads to us having a little bit of distrust with the current developer that they will come through on their promises and it makes me very concerned as to what surprises will occur when they do build apartments if they are approved. Number three, any of the people who lived in the Berkeley Homes, they were the same as we were. We had different home builder for us, but they were basically lied to and those lots were sold at a premium and they were told that they were sold at a premium because they were going to back up to an open space, which now they're finding out is gonna back up to apartments, not an open space. Number four, I don't know if you guys saw my email earlier today where I included a photo of our streets and how narrow they are and how they basically become a one-way access whenever any neighbor has too many visitors, but on top of that, how rogue some of our neighbors have become. I think I also included a picture of the newly painted crosswalk, which I'm more than certain was not city-approved. If you get the photo, you'll understand why. I'm also an AA parent. I do not go to Motzenbacher. I go to a different campus, but I see the same emails and I know exactly all the parents who did not follow the rules and who use our neighborhood as their main thoroughfare. Also, number six, the one-way traffic is just gonna become clogged down at the entrance points at our roundabouts and I'm very concerned that we will basically need to, the last point, petition to have streetlights put in there and I don't know how much those cost. I've heard that they can be upwards of $200,000 each and I just don't know that we're ready as a city to have to throw down an extra half a million dollars to put in two new sets of lights and I could be off on the numbers and I'm fine if I am, but I also just hope that you guys are taking record. You know, before me, there's been about nine participants. One of them didn't showcase, Rolando didn't speak, but I'm keeping track and so far, no one is agreeing to this and no one is on board and no one thinks it's a good idea and I think that it's unfortunate that so many people were unaware until today and that's only because of the efforts of the actual residents in our neighborhood and I think that speaks to the case that we are not on board and I-
Thirty seconds.
-genuinely that you will take our considerations, you know, to a genuine fashion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Vivek.
Hi, are you, can you hear me?
Oh, we can barely, barely hear you.
Hi, is it better now?
Yeah, we can hear you now. If you could state your name and address and spell your last name for the record.
My first name would be Vivek, V as in Victor, I as in India, V as Victor, E as in Echo, K as in Kilo and last name would be Singh, S as in Sam, I as in India, N as in Nancy, G as in Golf and H as in Home. I live at 11400 Brush Creek Street and respected council members and mayor, I echo the sentiments of most of the people here. The transparency is the major factor which is lagging. We purchased this house last year and while the builders showcased us the upcoming development, all the single-family homes and the paid homes, we were never being told that condominiums are coming there. As I was going through the slides, which Bill presented, it seems that it was approved in 2018 while we were purchasing the home in 2019. We were never met aware about it. All the good things were talked about it and as others members stated, I'm all up for the development, but condos do not go with our locality right now. The concern with the traffic, especially on the Motzenbacher, is a major one. We can see there's a school and it's already kind of 20-mile speed limit zone and that road will definitely choke. Apart from that, as a new homeowner, I'm really worried about the upcoming, the things which I'm hearing about the values going down. So, that is a major concern for us. We were not aware of it. Again, it's only yesterday that I came to know about it. There was no communication whatsoever, so I'm kind of feeling deceived here because of the lack of transparency and I would request council to take all these factors into consideration before making a judgment on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vivek. Next up.
Callie Tolver. Callie, please unmute your audio. Or Kaylee.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Kaylee Tolver. First name is spelled C as in Cat, A-L as in Lima, E-Y. Last name T as in Tom, O-L as in Lima, V as in Victor, E-R. And my address is 17201 Springfield Court. I am the last house on the corner in Clark Farms where that cul-de-sac is proposed to be made and I have a bit of a different thought in terms of the cul-de-sac. I do fully support having a fire hydrant placed there because at the moment, the closest fire hydrant is down the street and that's definitely a concern, but it is also a concern on how much parking is going to be there. My husband and I moved in in September of 2019 and we were informed that there was gonna be development in that area, but three-story condos were not part of that plan that was informed to us and it's definitely a concern as to how close that's gonna be to our house and our community and what it is going to do to the property values. I mean, getting into our community when American Academy drops off and picks up is an absolute nightmare currently, so I can't imagine that adding additional housing in that area is gonna help with the traffic either. Those are all my points and I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right, next up.
Tammy.
Tammy, are you there? Does it just say Tammy or does it have a last name?
Just says Tammy.
Just says Tammy?
Mm-hmm. Tammy, could you please unmute your audio?
Okay, I'll mark Tammy as well and we'll come back, just like Rolando. Go ahead and go to the next one.
Corey Wilks.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can. Corey, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Corey Wilks, C-O-R-Y, Wilks, W-I-L-K-S. I live at 1417402 East Newtown Parkway. First point I would like to make is there are, well, first and foremost, I would like that land to be developed. I think it's very beneficial for our community in Newtown, as well as Clark Farms, so I'm pro-developing it. However, I'm very much against having three-story condos in that neighborhood. First and foremost, it doesn't conform to our neighborhood. I'm a licensed real estate broker, have been for 15 years. I was a licensed appraiser and I can speak to property values being impacted directly from this non-conforming issue. There are existing condos, quote-unquote, in the neighborhood, however, those condos act like two-story homes with attached garages. Their condo is a legal description, not a description of a structure. The structures that are built, the nine condos that are built in this neighborhood, look and feel like townhomes and they are conforming to the area. They all have attached two-car garages and they don't cause a traffic issue. A three-story, 108-unit complex with underground parking is not conforming and it's a simple illustration. If I take you on a showing tour and we look at a house and you're like, "This is an amazing house," you look out the back window and there's condos there, you're gonna scratch your head versus if I take you to the exact same house and there's not condos there, I don't have to really explain any further that that impact right there of which house would you rather have? It's pretty obvious you'd rather have the one without the condos behind you. The impact of that is estimated at between 10 to 12% for the homes immediately surrounding those condos and that's coming from me as a licensed appraiser slash real estate broker. When, that's my biggest point right there is this isn't conforming. We need it developed. We do need it developed. However, we do not need three-story condos- However, we do not need three-story condos that don't conform to the neighborhood that are going to congest every corner of this neighborhood that's already congested. And then you throw in on top of that American Academy congestion. It's, it's just too much. It's not what we signed up for. I signed up to live in a single-family residence neighborhood that's conforming. I didn't sign up to live in a Denver-like neighborhood. Condos like this?
Thirty seconds.
They need to be near the Parker Corridor, the 470 corridor. That's where they belong. They don't belong in Newtown. They don't belong in Clark Farms. So please vote no on the three-story condos. Please vote yes on developing an attached home with any two-car garage, any home with a two-car garage. I'm all pro, I'm all for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Corey. Next up?
Just, so Tammy, it looks like you have video but not audio and we're going to get the phone number for you in just a moment so you can call in. Next is Kayla.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
We sure can, Kayla. If you'll do your name and address for the record, please.
Awesome. My name is Kayla, first name spelled K-A-Y-L-A, last name is spelled W-I-L, C as in cat, Z as in zebra, E as in Edward, K as in king, Wilzek, and I live at 17182 East Cedar Gulch Drive. As one of the other commenters had stated, East Cedar Gulch Drive is a private road and that is maintained by our own sub HOA association. And so I am foremost concerned about the impacts that that will have on cost to us as a sub-association and potentially the need to gate our community down the road if traffic gets too bad. I think that with the construction traffic alone, in addition to our regular residential traffic, is insanely absurd. And the levels of speed that some of the people who clearly don't live on this road, drive this road at, is horrifying. There are so many children playing on this, on this little road. So that's my main point with our road, I'll say that. But I would agree with many of the others that the condo look is just extremely non-conforming to a single-family residential area. It just doesn't, it doesn't look good, it doesn't aesthetically go well. I mean, they look really awesome down by the Target where those have gone up. They look great down in that area and I think they just, the kind of flow looks really nice down there. As a concerned homeowner, I am concerned for my property value as well as many others. But I would say I'm mostly concerned about how the owner-occupied units would be enforced in our little Newtown area alone. I know that we suffer from many poor tenant choices with rentals and we have some extreme unsavory behaviors that we get a ungodly amount of lack of support from the Parker Police Department, which is its own separate issue. But with Parker Police being unwilling to be helpful in one specific circumstance, I just don't know how they're going to handle any others with such a large community and number of units going up, should there be any other unsavory behaviors and non-conforming rental units in place. So that would be my main concern, is just how that would be regulated.
Thirty seconds.
I guess, I guess those three main points are, are what I have. So thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Next up?
Tammy, if you are on the line, you can go ahead and speak now.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yay, we can, Tammy. Do your name and address, please.
Our computer is a charm. So my name's Tammy Henkels, last name spelled H-E-N as in Nancy, K-E-L-S as in Sam, and I live at 17384 East Newtown Parkway.
Okay, go ahead.
And so just to essentially echo what everybody else is saying, I do want the land developed. My issue is with the condos. More specifically, I moved out of a condo unit because we did end up getting a lot of investors and a lot of renters. And when the renters came in, all the property went down and trash everywhere. So I purposely moved out of a condo living situation and bought a house to avoid any of those potential issues in the future. I do know that we have condos already in the neighborhood, but I want to point out that it's nine units, not over 160 units. So, you know, I was aware of those nine units when I moved in. It's a small, little building, you know, it's not that big, at the front of the neighborhood, and again, a small number of units. My concern is with the number of units being proposed with these condos. So I would like to see it developed, but I would like single-family homes. In addition to some of the tenants that you tend to get in the condo developments, the other issue is, of course, the traffic as well, to echo everybody else. I am on Newtown Parkway across from the park and it is a road that everybody seems to use to cut between Jordan and Matsonbacher. Not only just the American Academy, there's also a lot of people that just use it as a cut-through and they speed through the neighborhood. And I've called the police many times. I've had people try to pass me when I was going 15 miles per hour and cars parked on either side because they didn't like that I was going so slow. So my concern is with the increase in, in people with the condos, that they're going to be using it to cut through Matsonbacher or if they have kids at American Academy. I am concerned that we are going to have more traffic and more people speeding and there's nothing being done currently. In the seven years, I've complained about it to the Parker Police Department, to the HOA. Nothing is getting done to prevent this from continuing and I don't see that changing. So really, I won't take up much more time. I know that there's a lot of people and you guys probably want to get home. But thank you so much. Again, I am all for developing. I just do not want it to be condos.
Okay, thank you very much, Tammy.
The Burns Family?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and fellow residents of Parker. My name is Derek, last name is Burns, B as in Bravo, U-R-N-S. I am the board president of the sub-association.
Derek, if you could state your address, please, for us.
Which is adjacent to the property in question.
Derek, can you hear me? If you could go ahead and give us your address, please.
That under no circumstance has the builder or developer been in any communication with our homeowners association. Our sub-association is 42 units, all single-family homes.
Derek, I need you to state your, you probably couldn't hear me. I need you to state your address for us, please, and I'll reset the clock so you can start again. Go ahead. Go ahead, Danette, unmute him.
Okay, just, he's not unmuting. Just one moment.
Is he muted on his end?
It looks like he is. Mr. Burns, please unmute your audio.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah, if you could go ahead and please state your address for us and then I'll reset the clock and you can start again.
Sure, I am so sorry. Again, my name is Derek, last name Burns, B-U-R-N-S. My address is 11283 South Newtown Circle.
Perfect.
I'm the homeowners association board president for Newtown Village, the sub-association that is adjacent to the property in question. Our small board of directors has had zero contact or communication from the builder since day one. Even though we are part of the master association, we are a separate sub-association because of our street that we own. We share, and I speak on behalf of the board and our association, we share all of the concerns that all homeowners have brought forward. That includes safety, that includes parking, that includes home values. My family, we have four children. We've lived in this neighborhood for four years, I'm sorry, three years, and we still have no pool. We have no signs in our neighborhood. Construction traffic has torn down signs, ruined sidewalks, created damage in our neighborhood. And on a weekly basis, my family picks up four bags of trash, all construction trash, blowing all throughout our wonderful neighborhood. So I'll end there. My biggest concern is we still have no pool, we still have very little communication with what's going on adjacent to our neighborhood. We're extremely concerned for the safety of our families, safety of our neighborhood, and the future of our homes. I ask that the board consider voting down these condo units, but approving developing for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Danette, next up?
Sarah?
Good evening, my name is Sarah Hart, A-R-T, and I live at 17306 Paoli Way.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, awesome. So again, I am also sharing the same concerns and the same sentiment as all the previous speakers with the traffic, the safety, another thing that hasn't really been brought up. So even now, currently, we have a problem with snow removal in the neighborhood and that definitely impacts the traffic, especially with American Academy that went up right behind us. So if they build that cul-de-sac at the end of the neighborhood, which would be right at the end of my street, five doors down, one concern that I would have is that the plows would come through and just plow all the snow up into that cul-de-sac, blocking driveways. I currently kind of live at the, the end of the knuckle on the street that the builders were talking about, the first cul-de-sac, and the plows do that all the time where they bring the snow and just basically either leave it up in that cul-de-sac now or plow it right into my driveway. So that's a concern that I would also like to add. Yeah, so thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, Danette, next up?
Revanth Chandupatla. Sorry if I butchered your name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please, and please spell your name for us.
It's Revanth Chandupatla.
Okay, and your address, please?
And my address is 17334 East Ironore Avenue.
Okay, go right ahead.
So we moved into our new family home, Sandrose Creek Meritage Homes, about three months back. We were not, we were not really aware of what's going on in the community with respect to this condos development. We haven't been notified by our HOA or anything. I've been listening to comments from pretty much everybody that a lot of people are disagreeing with it. And we, like, I am pretty much disagreeing with it too because I'm worried about the increase in the traffic, decrease in our property values. I personally own a condo too in Parker condominium, the Cottonwood Drive, and I rent it out. So I'm pretty sure that that's what's going to happen with new condos coming into the neighborhood and like people who actually came into this neighborhood because it has, you know, all single-family houses and pretty much confirmed to, you know, the family life would be affected by it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Kyla Hamilton?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Kyla, if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Kyla Hamilton, H-A-M-I-L-T-O-N. My address is 17351 East Ironore Avenue, Parker, Colorado 80134. I do not want any more multifamily units in my neighborhood. I bought a home, my home, on East Ironore Avenue just three months ago. In fact, I sold a townhome to move here, to live in a single-family neighborhood. I have been in the build process with Meritage Homes for over a year. I have never been told about this development. I only found out about this last night when a neighbor was kind enough to come and inform me that there was a meeting this evening. I have just invested a great deal into this neighborhood and I am extremely concerned about a dramatic decrease in their property values. This is completely unacceptable. I've never been told about this, not from Meritage, not from my HOA, from no one but a neighbor. Had this plan been disclosed, I would have seriously considered buying elsewhere. There has been no transparency. This development will add to the congestion problem that honestly already exists. We only have a small green space in the area and the pool, which is not even open yet, is far too small for that many residents. Parking is already an issue in our area and this will only make it worse. Our streets are narrow. They turn into a one-way street with just one car parked on one side of the street. A three-story condo complex does not match the existing neighborhood that I chose to live in. In fact, it sounds something more that belongs in downtown Denver. I stand with my neighbors against this development. I signed up for a single-family neighborhood. Please, please do not vote for this development. Single-family homes belong here. That's what all of my neighbors bought into when we bought in this neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Next up?
Santiago Diaz?
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can, Santiago. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Santiago Diaz, B-I-A-Z as in zebra. My address is 17006 East Cedar Gulch Drive, Unit E. I really don't have much to add more than what all my neighbors have already added. I just want to state, I also disagree with, with this project and I hope you vote to put it down. I agree that the land needs to be developed. And I would also like to state, I've been living here for the past two years and I've never been informed that this was going on and I found out basically yesterday through our Facebook webpage. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Santiago. Okay, next up?
Rolando Umana?
Okay, this was, I'm assuming the Rolando from before. Unless we have two Rolandos. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me now?
I sure can, Rolando. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rolando, R-O-L-A-N-D-O, last name is Umana, U as umbrella, M as mom, A as an apple, N as Nancy, A as in apple. My address is 17159 East Cedar Gulch Drive. Thank you very much for calling my name again. I'm sorry about the technical difficulties.
That's fine.
I'm going to try to be quick. So first of all, I am pleading with the council to please vote no on the development of the condominium project. But I agree with my other neighbors that that land needs to be developed. I think it would, I would really appreciate if Mr. Bill Maher can provide a list of the neighbors that he said that are supporting the development because as other neighbors mentioned earlier, I think it's more people that are opposing this project that are in favor. One of the issues I have is transparency, specifically with the developer that sold me our home because we moved in around two years ago and we were aware that there were some development going on, for example, the pool. And, but no one mentioned that we were, we were going to have condos in our neighborhood. The other thing that I didn't agree with was... The other thing that I didn't agree with was, earlier today, I heard one of the finance guys for the development say that we live in a kind of a broken community, because the developer went broke, the original developer went broke like eight or 10 years ago, and then it sounded to me that we weren't a completely happy community, but I think that is not an accurate description for our neighbors. One of the concerns that we have with condos is that we know that most of them are going to be rentals, and as one of my neighbors mentioned, Kylie, I think, we already have enough issues with rentals in our small private street that haven't been able to be addressed by the police or the HOA or anyone. So basically, we have a homeowner, which is a landlord, and he doesn't care about the community or anything that happens in our street.
Thirty seconds.
As long as he gets his paycheck. And one of the other things is that the so-called trails that the developer mentioned earlier, like, those are already sidewalks that we have in our neighborhood. Thank you very much again for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next up.
Chris Benes.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Benes. I live at 17215 Springfield Court. Last name is spelled B as in boy, E N E S. And I just really want to echo the sentiments of everybody else. The property values are one issue, but I think the biggest issue is really the traffic. You're talking about bringing hundreds of cars onto Main Street and Matsumbacher. Matsumbacher is already a one-way street in both ways. In addition to that, you have hundreds upon hundreds of children that live in this area that go to this school, which causes already enough congestion during the school year. So I'd like to know when the counts were taken for traffic, because I'm not sure if really school trips were actually taken into consideration. But I think putting condos directly facing or backfacing the school with all of those cars on Main Street, which has very fast cars going down it all day, a one-way, each-way street on Matsumbacher, I think you're putting all of our children at danger, adding an additional a couple hundred cars due to apartments. So just wanted to really voice my opinion and urge you guys to please vote no for condos. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Next.
Chandu.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Chandu. Last name is Mudnuru. It's M U D U N U R U. First name is Chandu, it's C H A N D U. Address is 11385 Brush Creek Street.
Okay, go right ahead.
I share the same concern as my neighbors, and there is nothing new that I want to add than we are not opposed to the development of the land, just the condos.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tina Kane.
Tina, are you there?
Tina, please unmute your audio.
Okay, Tina, can you go ahead and unmute yourself, please? Does it show that she's talking? She's just muted? You can't tell?
It's just muted.
Okay. All right, let's come back to Tina. Next one.
Laura Hefta.
Hi, my name is Laura Hefta, and I live at 18236 Shadberry Lane, Parker, Colorado 80134.
Laura, could you speak up for us? We can barely hear you.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Is that better?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. I would just like to state that I agree with all of the individuals on this call who oppose the condos. I do live close to American Academy, and I would just like to state for the record that that intersection by Clark Farms and Main Street is very dangerous for the schoolchildren. It would be great if town council could look into traffic, more appropriate traffic signals in that area. Overall, just in general, right now, it is very dangerous for people coming off Main Street, making a turn there into Ameri, that street into American Academy. The condos would destroy the views, and in addition, it does not fit within the neighborhood or the development plan. Yes, the area can be developed and probably should be developed, but I would agree with the individuals on this call that it should be, at a minimum, townhomes that are also in the area or are twin-paired homes or single-family homes. So I would like to thank all the board members for attention to these matters and also looking into the traffic area off of Main Street, making a turn to see if any signals can be put in there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next up.
Ravi.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Hi, if you could, Ravi, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, so my name is Ravichandra Vankayala, last name Vankayala, V A N K A Y A L A. And my address, 11424 Brush Creek Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening, respected mayor and council members. Thanks for providing this opportunity for us to voice out. Actually, we don't know until my friend asked me to, until he forwarded me about this meeting, I don't know. So a lot of neighbors and a lot of other people don't know about what's happening with this development. So yeah, I'm going to echo with all my neighbors and the speakers today. So definitely, we encourage the development, but we are, this is not a feasible option for the condos to be built here. They, yeah, the same thing, like, traffic, safety, and operations are going to be operated with a lot of people. And also, because of this, the pool usage, yeah, we haven't got the pool yet. But again, once the pool is out, I don't know how they're going to be managed with this crowd and the parks and crowd. I don't know how it is going to be managed. Definitely, it should be transparent, and the communication should be passed to all the neighbors. So and also, the valuation of the properties will definitely be going down. And yeah, we signed up because to live with privacy in the single-family homes. So definitely, I'm going to oppose this, and you, I hope everyone will take this, look into this matter and vote for whatever the people are looking for. So hope you vote before you think about this. And yeah, just want to voice out this, and thanks again for listening.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up.
Sandy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can. Sandy, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sure. First name, S as in Sam, A for apple, N for Nancy, D for Daniel, E for eagle, E for eagle, P as in Paris. That's the first name. And the last name, P as in Paris, A for apple, R for Richard, E for eagle, P as in Paris, A for apple, L for Lucy, L for lion, Y for yolk.
Okay.
And I'm the owner of address 11431 Ironore Court and Parker, Colorado 80134.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
Sure. The primary concern is the transparency. I'm the buyer of this property beginning of May this year, so that's like very recent. I have not been told about this development or any plan for condos if it was planned a couple of years back. So I would have not even put a thought to buy this house or have an investment. So the primary concern is the transparency, property value, and the safety concerns like others have put on your table, and of course, that's going to be worst, having next to the school. So I would request the panel to consider individual's voice and rest of all development concerns. So just to conclude, this is not against the development of the land, but the answer is not the condos. There could be other possible ways that should have been put into the table and looked upon. Thank you for giving this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Okay, next up.
Arun. Arun, please unmute your audio.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Sure can. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Arul, and my last name is Upala. Let me spell that last name for you. U as in umbrella, P as in Paris, P as in Paris, A as in Australia, L as in Louisiana, A as in Australia. And the address, I live up on is 17193 East Springfield Court, Park, Colorado 80134.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thanks for providing this opportunity to speak. So I'm in line with all the other neighbors in regards to security, in regards to safety of the neighborhood. So I'm, and definitely, I'm against the condos. I'm okay with having paid homes right next to me, but definitely not condominiums. So the reason why I bought is I would like to live in a good neighborhood, and if I know that this condominium was planned two years ago, I would have not bought this home at that time. So considering all this, I'm definitely saying no to this condominiums right next to my home. And my home is next to this new plan, which is being pulled here, so please consider our concerns and please vouch to not have this condominium right next to us. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up.
Harish Viswanathan.
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Harish Viswanathan. Last name is V as in Victor, I S W A, N as in Nancy, Alpha Tango, H A N. And I live at 17339 East Ironore Avenue.
Okay, perfect. Go right ahead.
So I pretty much resonate with the sentiments of my fellow neighbors. Our lots were actually sold at a premium, and I closed this home just three months ago, and there was no mention of any condos or apartments that are going to come up in the neighborhood. If there was any mention of this, I would have pulled back, because I've seen other communities having this kind of issue with traffic, and even more so because of the school and all the other comments that my neighbors have mentioned previously, with how the school traffic can be when the school is actually fully functioning. So I'm also seeing a lack of transparency, because there was a mention in the board that this was discussed with the neighbors, and that there was a possible response, which I don't think. And I also think that there were no alternatives that were presented to the residents. I don't know why, because I don't think having a condo or apartment in this area is the only option, and we should be presented with alternatives that suit better and that fit better in this area. So if the board were to kindly vote no for this proposed development of condos and apartments, and please present us with any other alternatives that are more suitable and viable for this area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up.
Tina Kane, if you would like to speak still, please use the dial info number. The next person is Jessica Safer.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jessica Safer, J E S S I C A, and then last name is S as in Sam, A F as in Frank, E R, and I live at 11209 Jordan Court. I don't want to take up a lot of your guys' time. I know you've heard kind of redundancies. My two points are, I served on the Clark Farms HOA committee, have been on the board going on three years now, and I know the builders, I listen to them talk, and I'm trying to pursue them myself to see what dates they came to a meeting, because in my recollection, in my, going into my third year, I just don't remember the caring that they brought up of like, we wanted to let every HOA board know about this, what we're doing. I don't recall their plans. So I would like...
Harish, you're gonna go ahead and mute yourself, buddy? And I'll make sure you get more time there, Jessica.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I won't take up very much. So that's my only point there, is like, I wish I could have seen more of this. Serving on my HOA board here at Clark Farms. And the other piece is, I really didn't appreciate when the gentleman got on and was asked to speak into the property value aspect. I feel like it was very disrespectful how much he skirted. I totally appreciate his regards for knowing his sector of his company well in regards to talking about the bankrupt company that they took over from, but I am a homeowner coming to this meeting, trying to find out what is this doing to my property value, and if they didn't speak into that, I feel like they professionally skirted some issues well, especially I am my own, I own my own small business, so I know what it looks like to professionally do that, and I think they did that very well. So I trust your guys' deliberations, I trust your opinions. I did want to drop those in there that you will, I trust that you guys will make the best decision for our town. So thank you for your time and staying on here way past my young mama's heart's bedtime. So thank you, and that's all for now.
All right, thank you very much. Next up.
Will Vinson.
Okay, Will, are you there? All right, let's go ahead, and I'll put a question mark with Will. Let's move to the next one.
Tina Kane, are you on the line? So Mayor Will Vinson and Tina Kane have not been able to get through.
Okay, so this is the last, oh, go ahead.
Okay, and so then we have one more.
Okay.
Mike Heimerle.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can. Mike, state your name and address for the record, please.
So my name is Mike Heimerle, H E I M E R L E. I live at 11364 South Trailmaster Circle.
Okay, go right ahead.
Good evening, council for your time. I'm the treasurer of the Metro District HOA, and the master HOA, and I'm also the treasurer of the Newtown Metro District. So we've been working with Bryan and Pacific North since 2016, and if you take this as a puzzle, this Pacific, the Sanderos Creek North was the last piece of the puzzle to make the improvements to Matsumbacher and to let the Meritage Homes built. So we refinanced the bonds in 2018, as was previously mentioned, for the Metro District, because we were never going to be able to pay those off if we didn't refinance them, and our taxes would never go down. So we refinanced those bonds in 2018 with the help of this project, and the financing is hinged on these 156 units being built. So if these 156 units don't be built, the HOA, the master HOA and the Metro District would be in financial possibility of not being able to pay back those bonds if these units do not get built. So in 28 years from now, the taxes will be able to go down for these homeowners. So if the taxes aren't able to go down because these homes aren't built, then our property values risk to be lower because of that. And these units are gonna, so I bought my house in 2012, and these houses, these condo units are gonna be, start at a higher price point than what I paid for my house. condo units are gonna be, start at a higher price point than what I paid for my house. And then, uh, we, current, the point, we currently already have condo units in our community that exist already. And, uh, the notion for the meetings, uh, as, uh, Bill had previously stated, the meetings have been, uh, uh, over, a couple, couple of meetings each year. So there's been ample opportunity for people to voice their opinion. And, uh, for the Master Association Board of Directors meetings, not one person has come and echoed, uh, this discontent over this, uh, project. Uh, again, uh, there's three ways to access this new community. In addition, so there's gonna be an exit to Main Street, there's gonna be two, uh, exits to Jordan Road that currently exist. Uh, the pool that was mentioned, the pool, we're probably about two weeks of opening the pool because of this development and, uh, refinancing those bonds.
Thirty seconds.
The pool complex was, uh, enhanced, we would have a better pool complex because of it. And, uh, that, uh, the notion that condos are, no good people live in condos is offensive. So, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council, I beg you to approve this project because it's the financial viability of the Metro District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Dinette.
Um, Brandy Wilks, have you spoken?
Brandy has spoken.
Oh, okay.
Brandy and Cory both have spoken.
Okay, so the only two we have are Will Vincent and, um, Tina Kane, who we have not been able to get online.
Sorry, but there was also a Drivia to first start. Drivia was the first person.
Okay, last call for Divya, Will, or Tina?
Hello, this is Will, can you hear me?
Okay, yep, there you go, Will. Uh, state your name and address for the record, please.
Excellent. My name is Will Vincent, Victor, India, November, Sierra, Oscar, November, and I live at 17306 Paley Way.
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, I only have four points tonight. I would like, uh, I'll start with, uh, I would like the council to vote this appro, this proposal down for s, these four reasons. Uh, as stated, or first, as stated from all other speakers, this new development will increase the already dangerous traffic sys, situation that exists. Second, more affordable housing, especially condos, will increase density, and a side effect of this increased density will be a probable increase in crime in the community. This could be mitigated with, uh, the, the development of single-family homes as opposed to condos. Third, this will undoubtedly decrease property values. And fourth, uh, my family and I, obviously, uh, was unaware of that this sort of development was in the works until about five minutes before the council meeting today. So transparent, uh, transparency from the developer would have been greatly appreciated. And that's all I've got. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Council member Rivero, um, what name were you looking for?
That was, it was the first one. There was no, no response to a Drivia or a Divya.
Divya.
And then there was Tina, so no joy on Tina?
No.
Okay.
Um, Tina, I've asked you to unmute yourself. Have you been able to call in?
I'll just state that we received Tina's email, and it was very thorough. So thank you, Tina, if you can't speak.
Okay.
And I am not showing, um, that name that we had on here earlier. I think it was Divya, D I V Y A.
Okay.
I don't show her or him.
So with that, then I will go ahead and close public comment at 9:53 PM. Counsel, a couple of quick things. One, as you guys are aware, and for those at home, two, um, we actually have an ordinance here that says council's not allowed to do business past 10:00 PM unless they vote to extend the meeting. That's in like seven minutes. So counsel, I'm gonna ask the question, um, if I could get a motion to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM tonight? Motion from Jeff and a second from Josh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two opposed. Okay, so motion passes four to two. Um, we will extend past 10:00 PM. We have another item after this, but counsel, I am going to, um, use my mayor's privilege to call, uh, an executive session so you guys can receive specific legal advice from your attorney regarding the approval or denial conditions contained in the town code, and also give you guys a chance to hit the bathroom. So we're gonna go into exec session.
So, so let me go ahead and make the record. Um, you can hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 246424B. And the specific basis for going is to receive legal advice concerning the approval conditions for the requested rezoning under Section 1304240B7F of the town code.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a motion from Josh. Do we have a second? We have a second from John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we've got one, two, three, four, all opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Okay, so we're gonna go into exec session at 9:55. Those of you sitting at home, sit tight, we'll be back, I promise.
Being the Parker Town Council meeting at 10:08 PM. Council, now's the opportunity for discussion. I'm going to do like I normally do and give each of you an opportunity to ask any questions you may, final questions you may have or discussion items before I call for a vote. So, we're going to go through that and we'll just go the normal order of the diocese. So, John Dyak, since your last name rhymes with diocese, or looks like diocese, whatever. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. I mean, a couple of things. You know, I appreciate everybody's comments and passion and for you to be here for more than a few hours, we greatly appreciate input. Couple of things, just with the comments, I think we tried to address some of the themes that came up in public comment and we heard you as well, kind of refer back to those. So hopefully, some of that, you got an answer before you stated your concerns. One of the things I want to go back to is the building heights. So Bryce, could you maybe articulate that? I think we were talking about a 45-foot height on the new proposal of condos and we had the dialogue that was, you know, 30, 35 feet for the existing. Could you sort of articulate, was that a change in the plan or maybe help me out a little bit, understand why a larger height would be acceptable?
So, right now, in Old Town, in all of the planning areas, the maximum height is 35 feet. This would be the additional areas of PA 9 and PA 10 is being proposed for higher heights. PA 10 is 40 feet and PA 9 is proposed as 45 feet and that relates to allowing for the increased density on those sites to get to a three-story building.
Okay. John, do you have any other questions?
No, I mean, I think just a couple of anecdotes here. You know, I heard about potential traffic signals on Clark Farms and Main Street. I'm an American Academy parent as well and that turn lane does get backed up. I don't quite honestly think that the traffic signals are the challenge. I think the turning lane needs to be expanded and police, I heard a little bit about police not being responsive and I know we have tools out there, maybe Councilmember Toborg or Councilmember Rivera can articulate the active map that we have that's out there. I'm just missing the words at this point, but if you have challenges or issues, the Parker Police wants you to pin where those issues are so we can be aware, so we can then follow up. So, quite honestly, I'm at a loss in terms of our responsiveness from our Police Department. I think we have some pretty good response times, so that's all, Mayor, at this time. Thank you.
Debbie, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Renee, if, again, real quick, if there's any guests out there on Zoom, could you please mute yourself? Appreciate it. Renee, go ahead.
I have no comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff Toborg.
I just want to say thank you to the New Town and Clark Farms neighbors who testified tonight. You know, the one thing I didn't hear in this whole thing was, I want it left like it is. You know, you acknowledged that there will be development, you're supportive of development and I appreciate that very much. I just want to, if Mr. Mahar is still available, I just want to ask the question of the 108 condo units, what your marketing and sales plan is for that? And, because the question came up a couple of times, how do we ensure that it's owner-occupied versus just a sublet or sub-rented?
Is he still on, Donette?
Yes, I am. Thank you for the question. I can answer part of that and then I may turn to Brian Beiler, the property over on the second half of that question. It has always been our intention and we've been very transparent at all of our meetings and discussions with town staff that we are pursuing owner-occupied product for the attached townhomes and the condominiums and that has not changed and we are here, you know, being very forthright about that. It's very intentional because we know there's a growing demand for owner-occupied housing for baby boomers and young professionals and that is the market that Mr. Beiler is really trying to pursue and that is how we are crafting our site plan to respond to that and provide the kind of amenities that will support those types of people that are pursuing an owner-occupied home. Brian, if you want to speak to any questions about the market with regards to that product?
You cannot enforce renting.
Okay, wow. I'm not sure what that was. If you're watching and you're not called, please go ahead and mute yourself? Was that, there we go, okay. There was just a weird echo that came through.
Yeah, I think someone spoke up. Thanks, Bill. I think you're exactly right. You know, this property was actually brought to us by town staff initially when we were doing the 230 lot subdivision that we had approved, saying, kind of half jokingly, hey, why don't you guys just finish out the project and take a look at that vacant 10 acres there and do something with that and maybe look at condos? And at that point, that conversation started with the Old Town Council about that was possibly going to be the first condo project in Parker. Well, three years later and a lot of revisions and a lot of comments and from neighbors and everyone else and a lot of revisions on this project, it's taken a lot of effort to get it to this point and our plan is to be for-sale product. We anticipate marketing a lot of those units in the $400,000-plus range, some will be into threes. So as far as property values, I think we're going to help stabilize and increase property values and that's what we've done since we started the project even originally with Meritage out there.
All right. And Mr. Beiler, just one more question for you while I have you on. Do you concur with Bryce Matthews and Councilman Dyak's discussion of the height of the three-story unit?
I do. I do. And most single-family permitted homes are 35 feet or less in height.
Okay.
So, for a three-story property, there's only going to be three total buildings. We worked really hard, we changed a lot of footprints, we took neighbors' concerns, we moved those properties, you know, we moved those units back around closer to the commercial and that's part of the reason it took three years to get to this point. It's been a lot of redesign and a lot of effort on our part to try and stick to the commitment that was originally made by all of us back when that property was included into the Metro District, but we still had to keep the density and it's been tough and Carolyn's been instrumental in all of that and Bill's been great and it's been a lot of effort on everyone's part to get it to this point tonight.
Okay. So you concur though with the 45-foot estimate height?
Yeah, I believe so.
Great. That's it for me.
I think that's right, Bill. Right? You're just correct. Yes.
Okay. Cheryl, do you have anything to add?
Yes. Bryce, can you address this change in density, overall density?
So, currently, the existing Old Town development has, is approved for 493 units. This proposal will add 12.2 acres and also 156 more units. These additional units, or these additional product are divided into two planning areas. One is Planning Area, let me pull out my map just so I'm clear here in my planning One is Planning Area 9, which is the condos. They have a density of 17.22 DU per acre and the other is PA 10, which has a density of 8.15 acres. In the rest of Old Town, the highest density that is in there is PA 2, which is currently 15 DU per acre.
I'm sorry, what was that?
15 DU per acre for PA 2, which is currently the highest density permitted in Old Town.
So, which one was Planning Area 9?
Planning Area 9 is the condos that are proposed in, to be added in the 12.2-acre parcel.
Okay.
So that's the 108 dwelling units. That proposed density is 17.22.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Josh?
Just for clarification, Bryce, the Muawaa property, if it stood alone, what would the density be on the Muawaa property?
So, I'd have to do some math, but it's 17.22 DU acre for the northerly portion and 8.15 DU for the southerly portion. And if you'd like, I can pull out my phone and, because I can't do it in my area.
And the master plan suggested density at max for property in that area is what?
So, it is recommended at 3.5 dwelling units per acre for the medium-density residential. This is a neighborhood center, so the neighborhood center does allow for increased density where developed as part of a mixed-use development. It does not provide a cap on what that mixed-use or that higher density can be, but it does provide guidance in terms of layout as a transition from commercial to residential, single-family residential, and connectivity in terms of creating pedestrian and bicycle connectivity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so with that, Council, any other last questions or comments? Okay, so before you, there are two items, Items A1 and A2. If you could go ahead and mute yourself, or Donette, could you please? Thank you very much. All right, so first item up is, I would call for a vote on item, or a motion, excuse me, on 7A1, which is Ordinance Number 3.162.3 on second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, excuse me, deny ordinance number 3.162.3 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Can I, a point of clarification, real quick?
Yes, sir.
Under the code, if you are going to move to deny, you must provide the reasons for the denial.
Okay. The reasons for the denial, as stated, are the height differences, as well as the density changes in the planning areas as identified in our narrative wrap-up by Mr. Bryce Matthews of the Town of Parker.
Okay, so we have a motion by John. Jeff, do you still want to maintain your second?
I do, yes.
Okay, so I just want to clarify before I call the vote for everybody. And a vote in the affirmative, a vote of yes denies ordinance number 3.162.3 on second reading. A vote of no doesn't do anything, but it doesn't deny it. So to deny is a vote of yes.
And before we take the vote, I just want to get one more clarification. You did give reasons for denial. Can you identify a specific criteria that you would apply that to, whether it's not compliance with the master plan or, let's see?
Yeah, so I mean, all of this is a result of the master plan and the not consistent with the master plan.
I believe, in my opinion, it would be criteria number two identified in the master plan.
Yeah.
So would you want to include those additional reasons into your motion?
I will take a friendly amendment, yes. Mr. Toborg, is that okay with you?
That is acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So everyone's clear on what a vote in the affirmative and what a vote in the negative means? Okay, go ahead and now make sure when it pops.
Mike, will you say it one more time?
Sure.
They vote in the affirmative and they vote in the negative.
So, the motion is to deny ordinance number 3.162.3 on second reading. So if you vote in the affirmative, if you vote yes, then that denies that ordinance. If you vote no, then that motion dies. Does that make sense? All right, so.
Mr. Maloney, just a point of clarification, do we need to state the criteria word-for-word,
You certainly can. I can read it into the record if you'd like.
If you would, please.
So, criteria number one, we're looking at Section 1304-240. Looks like.
Sorry, I'm looking, I believe I was looking at criteria number two, sir.
Right. But again, I'm setting it right back into the code and that would be subparaphrase F.
Specifically, a parcel is indeed the correct site for a proposed development.
Correct. Subparaphrase F, so it'd be F2, the particular parcel of ground is indeed the correct site for the proposed development.
Okay.
And again, as a part of the record, my understanding is there are two issues that were identified by Council. One is the increase in height and the other is the density issue.
That's correct.
Okay. Carol and Chris, do you have the right verbiage put in for the vote that's about, or for the box that's about to pop open for them? So, okay, so it's a, the motion was to deny. Has the box popped up?
Mike, my box doesn't say the deny verbiage.
Okay.
We have the motion written here on the mark.
Okay, so here, I'm just going to do a voice vote individually. So the motion is to deny ordinance number 3.162.3 on second reading. John?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Maloney, with that being passed unanimously on Item Number Two, what has to happen with the sketch and preliminary plan then?
So at this point, I guess we take a second motion to deny since the, there's no.
There's no zoning to support it.
To support the plat.
Okay. So I would need a motion for Item Number Two, please.
I move to deny Item Number Two, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion from Josh and a second from Cheryl. John?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Josh?
All right.
All right, motion passes unanimously for the denial, so both of those items were denied. All right, next item up on your agenda is Item Number Eight, which is ordinances. What we have here is Ordinance Number 9.320 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, the Town of Castle Rock, the Town of Parker, City of Lone Tree, the City of Castle Pines, and the Town of Larkspur concerning local governmental distribution under the CARES Act. Mr. Maloney, please.
Mayor and Council, under the CARES Act, Congress established the Coronavirus Relief Fund in the amount of $150 billion. The Governor of the State of Colorado allocated $270 million of those funds that were received by Colorado to local governments and this included Douglas County. The amount that was allocated to Douglas County is approximately $30 million. In your packet this evening is a proposed intergovernmental agreement between Parker, Douglas County, Lone Tree, Castle Pines, Castle Rock, and Larkspur and the purpose of this agreement is to establish the structure for reimbursement of the eligible expenses incurred by the parties to the agreement. The amount allocated to Parker would be $2.8 million approximately and just, you need to note that this is not a grant of funds, rather this is an opportunity to seek reimbursement for specific eligible expenses. Any questions, Mayor and Council?
Council questions? Cheryl?
What is the term of this offer?
I'm sorry, the term?
Term. Over what period of time?
Until the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Renee, do you have any questions? You can just shake your head yes or no.
Thank you.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 10:27. If there's anyone wishing to address Council on this ordinance, and Donette, you're the one who will be watching, so if you want to address Council on this item, please raise your hand on the Zoom meeting. Any motion, Donette?
Nope.
Okay. Then we'll go ahead and close public comment at 10:27 and I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.230 on second reading, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Josh and a second by Debbie. Everyone's box has popped up?
Mine's not.
Okay, everyone else but Jeff has popped up?
I'm an I.
Jeff is a yes on it, so can you go and manually put Jeff as a yes? Okay, motion passes unanimously. With no further business before Council, we will adjourn at 10:28 PM. Please wash your hands.